Okay, good evening, folks. Thank you for joining the joint study session of the City Council and Planning Commission. So our first item this evening will be public comment. So as this is a special meeting, we take public comment at the beginning of the meeting and only for items that are on the agenda. And if you are interested in providing public comment on the Gateway Area Plan, please raise your hand now if you are on Zoom or if you are here in person, because I do want to, Karen's going to try to get a count here. We do, so anyway, so, okay, let's count first. Okay, but so this evening, anyway, to maximize our time as well for discussion, we want to have a chance to hear from everybody who wants to speak. And we also want to respect the time of our council and Planning Commission as well. So we are going to be limiting our public comment to one hour. And so whatever number we have will kind of decide if we're going to have two minutes or one minute. Okay. Okay, so we'll, yeah, okay, so we'll have two minutes then for comment. So if you are interested in commenting, now is the time. So please start, make your way to the podium, please line up. I ask that also because public speaking is hard for most of us, and I know a lot of people sometimes getting up on this podium, it's their first time speaking in front of the public. So please, to make everyone feel safe and comfortable and to just keep the process kind of moving, can we please hold excessive applause, remarks, calling out, et cetera, until the end of all of our public comments to make this go quickly and smoothly so we can hear from everybody in a timely fashion? All right.
Let's make sure that if someone has something to say that's the same as the previous.
Yes, yeah. And if your comments are pretty similar to maybe the person in front of you or the first few people in front of you, you know, keep your comments brief. You can say, hey, I agree with the speaker before, you're seeing us show up here. So thank you, folks, and we're going to start our one-hour time of public comment, and you will have two minutes for your comments. Thank you.
Good evening. Sunny day, sweeping the gates away. On my way to where the streets are safe. Can you tell me how to get, how to get to Linear Park? Walk and ride with all our Arcata pride. Friendly neighbors there, that's where we meet. Can you tell me how to get, how to get to L Street? No dangerous semi trucks, well, maybe a few small ducks. How much money have we already spent? Can you tell me, can we really all have affordable rent? Families come and play, everything's A-OK. Here in Linear Park, it will stay that way. Can you tell me how to get, how to get to Linear Park? Don't want no couplet in the dark. How to get to Linear Park?
My name is Gil Friedman. I'm a resident for 30 years of Arcata, and I think we all want the city to be safe. A year ago, one of my best friends, Jeff Garcia, was killed as a pedestrian, and she pushed the courier, her carriage out of the way to save her infants. So Arcata has the Traffic Safety Committee to make sure our streets are safe. And on their May 16th, 2023 meeting, Clear Dave Ryan, the chairs and other members of the committee, took mere seconds to reinforce what they have clearly stated as their firm position on the couple, a couplet concept of L Street. They are against it and feel it has no place in the modern design of Arcata's streets and traffic patterns. What the priority to improve L Street as a people's corridor. Now, there's a book written by Jeff Speck called Walkable Cities. You could look it up, it's in its 10th edition. And he gives all the reasons why two-way streets are much safer than one-way streets. The obvious, if you just look at each and G Street, how fast they drive on it. They drive double the speed, their businesses on the side of the road, get much less business on one-way street, and they're much more dangerous. L Street is one of the most beautiful places in Arcata. It should be left just the way it is. You know, in the famous words of the Beatles, "Let it be." You don't have to do anything, they don't need gardeners, it's a wonderful street, and it should stay just the way it is. Now, I'd like to make a comment about the high-rise buildings. Recently, there was an incident on the one on Seventh Street, and the fire department had a lot of trouble getting that top floor. There's a, there's a whole revolution in Europe going now. It's called a Nordic revolt against ugly modern architecture, and it shows all these high-rise buildings, and they're all against them. All over Paris looks nice downtown, when you're going to suburbs, all these 10 and 15-story buildings. And all over America, they build these low-cost housing, and then they, they all ripped them down because they were crime centers, the people didn't like living there, and the one here, the rents have just gone up 40% in one year. So low-cost housing isn't really low cost once they move in. And I urge you to break this couplet and hope that someone is, you know, balls on the City Council to make a nomination to eliminate it.
Okay, thank you, sir. Let everybody else have their turn. Thank you. Folks, please hold your applause. Thank you.
Hi, Council, Commission staff, I'm Maggie Gaynor, and I wanted to address a topic that is not among the top three that you mentioned for this evening. So just really briefly, it's often forgotten in this type of planning, and you can guess it's waste. So for, when you start to drill down to the details of any kind of public commons, spaces where people will be gathering, fairs, festivals, whether it's the plazas, ballparks, or whatever, you need to start budgeting and planning for the infrastructure for plumbing that will help us to really transition from our overemphasis on recycling to reuse systems. And we won't need all those single-use plastic water bottles anymore because the crowds can be hydrated without. So it's, it's infrastructure and it's plumbing and that, you know, I can, I can give more detail and explanations of what other cities are doing at another time, but I just wanted to give you that heads up. Thanks.
Thank you, Maggie.
Fay Honoroff, longtime Arcata resident. To me and many people here, the question of L Street is a question of what type of community we want to be. Jeff Speck, who Gil may reference too, is an award-winning city planner, urban designer, lecturer, and author who advocates internationally for more walkable cities. I contacted Mr. Speck about L Street and about using his material tonight. He responded with these comments. The traffic will only come to Arcata if Arcata invites it. How to invite it? Build more and wider roads. The following is from his book, Walkable Cities: 101 Steps to Making Better Places. Quote, "There are many things that can be measured in cities, each of which has its own impact on success: density, diversity, walkability, property value, resource conservation, life expectancy, free-flowing traffic. All of these relate to a city's well-being attractiveness and future prospects, yet only one of them, the last one, traffic flow, is routinely used to direct decision-making around a city's growth, and ironically, it is the one that works to the detriment of all the others. Let that sink in. The one aspect of urban life that has the most impact on city planning, traffic flow, exists in almost perfect opposition to all other good things a city can have. Time and time again, studies find clear inverse correlation between easy driving and every other measure of success." Unquote. I appreciate that the planners are thinking about how to accommodate the new residents in the new housing going on, and I support new housing. We need to welcome more people here, but we do not need to welcome more cars. Expanding roads for more cars is wrong thinking born of a different era. Please do not expand L Street paving the way for more vehicles. L Street should be expanded into a full-width linear park. Much has been written about the American healthcare crisis being largely an urban design crisis, with walkability at the heart of the cure. City planners need to plan responsibly, both for our community and the planet.
Hi, my name is Pop Stockwell. I've been a longtime resident of Arcata, and I'm here to say that I do not support turning L Street into a thoroughfare, but instead creating a full-width linear park. I understand the need for more housing in Arcata, and I appreciate all of the planning and work that has been done in creating the Gateway Plan. But the L Street corridor, besides being one of the few city trails where walkers are not competing with cars, can be a lovely wide walking biking path, and with improvements, be very park-like. This would actually be a draw for folks, in my estimation, that would potentially live in the multi-story apartment buildings that you're planning for. Having a place to go and relax right in their own neighborhood would make living at a high-rise a little more inviting. Please do not turn L Street into a thoroughfare. Thank you.
Hi there, I'm Dave Ryan. Please join me for a minute here as I take an imaginary trip into the future. I've just finished a run on the trail along the linear park, sitting outside of one of my favorite cafes enjoying a smoothie. I look across the way and see young families laughing and smiling, enjoying themselves in front of an ice cream shop. Down the way, I see the L Street banjo band setting up for their weekly gig in front of the bookstore. It's a lovely evening in Arcata, in this area that people have started calling the "L." People of all ages are out walking, biking, or just relaxing, relaxing on benches or at outside tables and cafes. It's quiet and enjoyable. Others were here in the morning at the bakery or coffee shop along with their kids, running around playing safely without worrying about cars. As you see, there's no street here. Back in 2023, the City Council voted that idea down. The Gateway Plan talks about, quote, "pedestrian-bicycle-friendly corridors that draw residents and visitors to enter the gateway via means other than motorized vehicles, and fulfill the potential of the rail-to-trail project." The planned area currently contains no public parks or publicly accessible open spaces other than the rail-to-trail project along L Street. I believe the community, people of this community embrace those goals and visions I quoted earlier from the Gateway Plan. Dan Burden said, "Don't build transportation through communities." Maybe it's time to bring someone like Dan in now so we don't have to bring him back later to tell us how to fix this street or ask, "Why did you put it there in the first place?" Your leadership and vision is sorely needed right now before this opportunity is lost forever. In my imaginary trip to the future, I see kids and others having a safe space where they don't have to contend with cars. The City Council should emphatically reject this proposal of a new street and instead designate it as a linear park for people. Thank you.
Hey, Sarah, Tiger Pride. I am so glad a lot of people came out tonight because what I wanted to discuss is representation. And the Arcata that I've known and loved for 20 years has historically been promoting local businesses, eating fresh, healthy food. We're so lucky to have a lot of it grown nearby even. And recently, I've heard at a city meeting, I'm not sure by who or when, that some of the city assume the public that isn't at the meetings agrees with everything that's happening here. And I don't believe that's true. I believe it takes a lot of work to keep up with all of the work you guys are putting in, and I respect that. Another issue that is right in the same line of thinking is the Turner Housing Innovation Labs. I think that it's very important that the city pays more attention to the public input and does not work with a conglomerate nonprofit that's funded primarily by corporate interests who have no history here in Arcata, are probably not welcome here in Arcata, and just generally don't have the best interest of our quality of life in mind. I think it's historically accurate to say that. We could go through the examples for hours. As, you know, being sued by the government, different things that these companies have all been a part of are now funding an information dashboard that is helping you guys guide city development when so many of the public are hurting and losing hope because they believe that something is going to happen here that isn't going to be healthy or good for the economy or good for our lives. And I think it's really important that we remain in our character. There's a lot of expertise in Arcata that's worth drawing upon, and a better effort to engage the public will lead to fruitful results. Thank you.
Good evening, Council members. My name is James Clor. I thought I'd talk about building heights and share a minority opinion that probably doesn't get brought up at these meetings too often. I love tall buildings. I love seeing tall buildings get built. I love seeing tall buildings on the landscape. I love walking next to tall buildings. I think they are an engineering marvel. I also think they're psychologically rewarding. It's a giant sign that someone thinks your community is worthwhile to invest huge sums of money into, usually to the tune of $20 to $40 million. Yes, single-family dwellings can be beautiful, but in reality, that's a single family that is benefiting from that build. A large building can benefit many families, businesses, et cetera. On building height in the Gateway Area Plan, two things to note. The maximums are permissive, not mandatory, with language like "allows," "up to," not "requires" buildings to be or "building heights must be." Second note, builders may not build eight-story buildings or seven-story buildings. Conventional wood frame construction is limited to five stories. Switching to other framing methods is more expensive and requires an entirely different building technique. Who's to say that the majority of builders may choose to build five-story buildings or four-story buildings, even though higher buildings are allowed? Please leave the building heights in the land use designations as presented in the plan. Please don't let two years of work, thousands of staff hours, hundreds of volunteer committee hours be kneecapped in the final leg of this process. I think the Gateway Plan is an amazing opportunity for the city of Arcata to grow in a manner consistent with its values and to equitably welcome more people into our community. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, Council members. I'm Colin Fisk, Executive Director of CRTP, the Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities. CRTP's members and supporters include many local organizations, as well as hundreds of individuals, many of them Arcata residents. You've heard me say many times now that the Gateway Area Plan is the most bike and pedestrian-friendly plan that we've yet seen proposed in Humboldt County. There are a lot of reasons that's true, but I'll just stick to two of them tonight. One reason is the plan density. Research shows very clearly that denser development is needed for walking and biking, as well as to support improvements in public transportation and transit ridership. That means, frankly, taller buildings, exactly as the plan calls for. Of course, another critical feature that makes this plan so bike and pedestrian-friendly are the direct improvements to the bike and pedestrian system that are laid out in the plan. In this part of Arcata, I want to call out that K Street and 11th Street are the biggest gaps in the low-stress bike system and the biggest barriers in both the bike and pedestrian systems because it's often dangerous and stressful to cross them. So the bottom line is that fixing those streets is a top priority as part of this plan. Is this a perfect plan? No, of course, nothing is perfect, but it's a really good plan. It's one of the best that we've seen, and the Planning Commission has made it even better with almost two years of painstaking review. They've recommended building heights of four to seven stories in the various districts or limits of four to seven stories. They've also agreed on the need for significant near-term safety improvements on K Street. So we would ask that you respect those recommendations, move this plan forward, and also to agendize K and 11th Street safety improvements separately and soon so that we don't have to wait for fixing those streets. Thank you so much.
Hello to all. James Becker. I want to praise Council members Schaefer, Matthews, and White for your individual consensus policy ideas on the L Street linear park and accompanying safety improvements for K Street. I believe it's possible to make K Street safer for pedestrians and cyclists without sacrificing the L Street corridor, which in entirety is the centerpiece of Arcata's infill transformation. Moving forward, hopefully you can solidify this position and start to nurture a vision for a L Street park. I envision neighborhoods' trail stewardship, dedicating frontagements to mesh into the parkway, infill housing that scales up as it steps back from the corridor, the celebration of urban greenways phasing in and out of a woe-nervous passage through the Carimory District. The essence of the L Street rails with trail corridor offers much potential, drawing from its basic simplicity. If you design outward from the L Street corridor, L Street linear park, then the entire plan becomes more harmonious. Walking and cycling paths can flow from existing neighborhoods and future infill alike into Arcata's primary active transportation corridor, much like daylighted creeks and wetlands combining into complexes complemented by wildlife corridors unimpeded by segmentation. A place to commute, a place to socialize, a place to coexist, a place where travelers from as far away from San Francisco Bay Area will choose to linger and explore and admire Arcata's contribution to the Great Redwood Trail. Following these basic guiding principles, the possibilities are unlimited. Preservation of the L Street corridor and its dedication as a linear park offers a moment of healing for a large number of community members looking for a sign that their voice makes a difference. Finally, I encourage the City Council to either strike the gap policy GA7I, no net loss class trails from the Gateway draft, or clarify that it does not apply to the L Street pathway, and the L Street pathway shall not be traded for another trail location. Thank you, and thank you for everything you're doing.
Mayor Schaefer, Council members Matthew and White, thank you for each recognizing that K Street improvement needs shall not be at the expense of L Street corridor. It's encouraging to hear your recommendations for L Street. They clearly reflect the work and work to logically examine all the information and our emotions. A few loopholes to close. First, completely eliminate the KL Street couplet from the Gateway draft. Let's honestly prioritize active transportation over vehicles. Two, focus on K Street concerns now. Invite Dan Burden back to help. His solutions are vast, and he emphasizes public engagement, like, he'd be like a bridge over a divide. Three, close the door for the future need to move more traffic down L Street. And finally, give us our promised park from 2010. Designate all the open spaces within L Street, the L Street corridor, to the linear park. Put this language in the Gateway area draft as well. The community's vision for the L Street linear park and staff's vision are vastly different from one another. I clarify. We do not want a useless strip of grass next to a major road. We do, we want the full monty. We do, please do not Brazilian wax our park. We want benches, we want art, flowers, trees, wetlands, and bushes. So hopefully, from here forward, we can break down the barriers, increase the community involvement, democrat, democratically engaged to discuss the Gateway concerns together as a community. For building height, setbacks, setbacks, solar shading, affordability, ownership opportunities, infrastructure demand, the list continues. It's time to pull the community out of the non-comporting box. Yes, we're told the city is not striving for the Mazzarati plan, but we don't want to end up with a pinto. Thank you.
It was almost a year ago, August 20, August 23rd of last year, that you had a joint session, and you, the majority of you at that time, not all, voted for seven stories was, was what you wanted. And unfortunately, you made that decision when we had the fire district that was just there a few weeks prior and asked you not to make that decision because they needed to do an analysis on what they could, were capable of doing. And that didn't come about till January of this year. They were postponed a number of times, and at that meeting, they basically said, "Don't build anything over three stories because we cannot, we can't service that. We already have the sorrow place," which they brought up at that time, that they had two incidents with oven fires, and it almost got out of control. They also stated a lot of people are volunteers. It's not ethical to ask people to go into mid-rises or high-rises, and that has not, we haven't had a conversation about that since. I'd also like to address the fact that sea level rise from the fact that you're building in what is the coastal zone, one-third of it, and there's a reason it's called the coastal zone because it was underwater in the 191850s, all these dikes were built. So with, with the advance of sea level rise, I mean, look at the news in the last two months. We've had, off Key West, the ocean temperature was 101 degrees and killing off our coral. And also, we've also had sea ice, it's a 35% reduction this, this year. So this area, you had experts here in this chamber that said, "Not a very good idea to be building there. Why would you want to invest and put all this money into an area that is going to be underwater?" So you need to really address these things. We haven't had a conversation on any of these since. Thanks.
Good evening. Dave Mazur from Arcata. I think we have to realize where the Gateway Plan came from originally, and it was kind of outside, not outside, distant, but consultants who were asked to come up with a plan. And they came up with this beautiful, colorful plan, showing these beautiful buildings with people happily walking down the shaded streets, as if we needed shaded streets here. And it's kind of been imposed upon us as a starting point rather than a more organic process. Personally, I go down on my bicycle, I go down Alliance quite a bit, and I've never seen a huge amount of traffic there, and I rarely see a truck there. Every now and then, there'll be a co-op truck or something. And even if traffic were to double, it's clear that K Street, Alliance K, would take the load if it were redesigned. So there's no reason to, to make another street and a one-way street and divide it up because the traffic just isn't there. And even if the Gateway Project goes through, the huge increase in traffic is not going to be there, especially because everybody's pledging to fewer cars. But I think the thing we really have to look at is the overall Gateway Plan and how it was this formulated thing by an advisory group, by a set of designers who came up with this beautiful idea out of, I'm not sure exactly where. And now we're dealing with that rather than a more organic, more Arcata-friendly way of growing, which would be using such things as SB9 so that people could put extra units in their backyards. So please consider that and do save L Street. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Stephanie Harden-Bedega by Stevie, and I live in my Chevrolet, currently parked on Ninth and L Street, where I've opened a cute little rock shop in the storage units across the corner from the pub. I'm a witness of this trail by the rail, and I watch the Petey Parade every day. Petey is an old guy, and his, his pals walk him and help him exercise because he needs to stretch his legs. I watch the other abled people get to go out and exercise and be around other people they wouldn't normally get to be around if they didn't have that park. So I just think that it shouldn't be a major thoroughfare for this neighborhood. I've, I've seen other neighborhoods just get cut off, and I, I live here now, and I'd like to stay living here, and I'd like to see it beautiful for, for the kids, for the grandkids, for the people that are going to come in and need somewhere to love each other and not all be cold and hard because people are going to need a place for compassion. Thank you.
Good evening, City Council members. My name is Melody Meyer, and I live in Arcata. I'm also a tribal citizen of the Pueblo of Laguna, and I work with tribal communities in California. My comment today is on the Gateway Area Plan. I urge the city to, to approve the Gateway Plan as recommended by the Planning Commission. I know there are many people who are affected by the housing crisis, people who might look like me but aren't able to speak out about the situation that they're in, and they don't have the time to come to council meetings or Planning Commission meetings. Native American communities experience disproportionately high rates of housing insecurity, and I urge you to think about this vulnerable population and how you can support tribes by providing more housing opportunities. I work in a fairly high-paying industry, and my coworkers still have a hard time finding housing. And I know that there's a lot of projects that tribes want to complete, but they always have, are stopped by thinking about, well, who's going to, who's going to come work for this because there's not enough housing around? And I don't think this issue should be dragged out any longer. I think the Commission has put in a lot of work on this, and it can be approved as it is. I I also want to urge you not to reduce building heights and leave the plan as is. I think it's frustrating to hear people complaining about shade when we're looking to house more people and that's the bottom line. And I'm tired of seeing a small, wealthier subset of the city and population benefit from the city and others are left behind. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Martha Jane. I have a letter from the Humboldt County Beer Runners about, against the couplet. And then I prepared some things for myself, so I'll just start. So this is the Humboldt County Beer Runners. We're a group, a group who meets every Wednesday at 5:30 to run a local trail and visit afterwards at a local restaurant or brewery. We meet rain or shine, dark winter nights. We run on the Arcata Marsh, Eureka Waterfront, Clam Beach, the McKay Community Forest Trail and the Arcata Community Forest. We heartily welcome all. We have a great time enjoying where we live and getting to know our special community. We do not support the K and L couplet idea being put forward in the city's Gateway planning. As runners, we know that it's, what it's like to run on streets and dedicated paths. When we have a chance, we run the rail trail on L Street to access the Arcata Marsh. It's quiet and friendly. Even with wide bike pedestrian paths included, L Street will become a more, will become more dangerous at each intersection and the calm linear park feel will be gone. L Street is a linear park and has room for urban growth. Please don't make it a car and delivery truck connector between Alliance Road and Samoa Boulevard. So that's one, and I'll see if I can get on this. So this is, this is from me. The Gateway planning area is big. The documents are dense. Many people have aligned on sides rather than discussing ideas about how to plan a great space. I have been heartened by the people standing up for the L Street linear park. They have a dedication and a vision for an inclusive and livable Arcata. I believe the Gateway area can increase in density and still contain the L Street linear park without the KL couplet. By abandoning this couplet, this area could remain a calm and human-centered place. L Street, as the proposed connector street between Alliance Road and Samoa Boulevard, downgrades the experience of this area. By supporting the Arcata-L Street linear park, we build on a reality already in everyday use. So is that it?
Good evening, my name is Jeff Hunterlock. I'm with the Humboldt Del Nord Building and Construction Trades Council with 15 affiliated unions here locally. I'm also a Humboldt County resident. I want to thank the staff and the council members for the opportunity to speak on the Gateway project. I urge you to move forward with this project. Listen, my members, I want to speak deeply. My members here locally can't even afford to buy a house and they make a fairly good wage, living wage. It's a big, big problem here with all the things in the future. Look, we're sitting on a gold mine here in Humboldt County regarding the offshore win, the port development. There's people going to be coming, not a gang of people. We want to house the people here from Humboldt, Cal Poly, my workers. I tell you, it's a struggle. I can speak this because I'm one of those workers. I live in a fifth-wheel trailer. I've been here eight years and I haven't been able to afford a house for me. And I do make a fairly decent living. The fact of the matter is, look, we are in a housing crisis for the tribal nations, for the Cal Poly, for Humboldt County, for Arcata. I mean, we're, we're sitting here talking about the plan. And look, I agree with the community, okay? There has to be stipulations made. I think the county or the city of Arcata, the commission has done a great job in the plan, in the Gateway plan. And moving it forward is an urgent, I couldn't tell you how urgent it is to move forward tonight. And I thank you for the opportunity to speak and I hope you build it because our workers want to work on it, they want to live in it, and so does a lot of other people. So thank you for the time.
Good evening, council members. My name is Suzanne Dunning. I have a business in the Creamery District. I'm also born and raised in Humboldt County in Arcata. And I chose to stay here after graduating with highest honors from UC Berkeley instead of going to Europe where it's human-focused to live because it wasn't built around cars. I chose to come back to Arcata because I had helped envision a community that wasn't organized around cars, that prioritized humans. And sure, we can make a ton of money building a bunch of high-rise buildings and we'll house a lot of people, but will this be a place that anyone wants to live? And I speak for a lot of people in this community who are home-raising kids right now, who can't be at a meeting like this, who are professionals, doctors, lawyers, and can't come and voice their opinion. And every single one of them feels strongly that what this county needs is more green spaces. I originally got involved in the Creamery District because it was a center for creativity as opposed to commerce and consumerism. We need spaces where people can be, where they can collaborate, where they can come together, where, yeah, there are trees. What a concept. Humans are healed by trees. We need to be outside. And if the only things in our country revolve around buying crap, we are going to have strip mall after strip mall of targets and low-income housing. And anyone that has any iota of creativity is going to leave the country. So that's all I want to share. I hope that you respect the hard work that I've been putting in since I was 11 years old, demonstrating in front of this building for green spaces and creative spaces in Arcata. I have invested my entire life in this community. I hope to stay. I love the Creamery District. I love what we've put together down there in terms of a space that supports people of all walks of life. And sure, we need housing, definitely. It'll come if we make the resources happen. So, thank you.
Good evening, I'm Fred Wise with ArcataOne.com. I want to express my gratitude to Mayor Schaefer, Vice Mayor Matthews, and Council Member White. By taking a larger view in areas that are crucial for the city's success, you're breathing some new life into this process in a way that is respectful to the people of Arcata. Thank you. Our next community-led Gateway meeting will take place in two weeks, September 5th at the Arcata Playhouse, 5:30 PM. For conceptual, big-picture conversation that's required now, I propose that the meeting framework that's been proposed here is not suitable and would work against your goals. The agenda in two places states that the Planning Commission, quote, "provided a recommendation to the city council for adoption," end quote. We are not here for the adoption of any recommendation, as I think we all know. The Planning Commission's minutes state that they have forwarded their working draft of the general plan updates to the city council for discussion and consideration. I suggest that this error in tonight's agenda be corrected immediately. The Plan Area Massing Diagram is a 3D image of potential new development in the Gateway area. It would enable the council members and the public and the commissioners to evaluate the look and feel and the solar shading of the taller buildings. This has been absent. The city has spent $35,000 on 3D images and they are nowhere to be found. This was contracted eight months ago. I propose that no city planner can evaluate the massing and tall buildings without something like this, this 3D image. I strongly urge you to insist that panelists supply this and that we see it. Thanks.
Hello, my name is Cody Freitas. I'm with the Operating Engineers Local 3, lifelong resident of Humboldt County. However, I wasn't someone who was able to afford to live in Humboldt County my entire career. So just recently, after 10 years of traveling beyond the road, I'm, I'm back home full-time now. So I would like to voice my support of the Gateway project and bringing access and housing to people. And there's been a lot of talk of legacy projects in our area coming on with a lot of other things coming our way. Personally, nothing is more of a legacy project than living in a town or living in any sort of construction that you helped build, helped design, that you can see in your community every day. Driving to something on your way home is awesome, but seeing something and being around something that you helped build, helped create every day in your home is what a legacy project truly means to me. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Alan Sanborn. I'm glad you're still here, Judith. I know, I would like to see Arcata just as it was in 1970. It was, it was Eden. It was paradise, but it's not going to happen. I think we live and breathe by the university and the university is planning to expand and there will be an influx in people. There will be a project happening. I think all the workers who are planning on working will be working on something. But I think that there is, we talk about green spaces and parks. There are green spaces. There's a beautiful green space, a lovely almost park on L Street. The people here in Arcata have made it happen. We center on that. Why do we have to center on, how do we make cars and trucks move better? Why can't we center on, we've got a beautiful little spot of paradise in the middle of Arcata, we keep that and move around it. How do you move around it with a truck route? I believe, unless it's changed, the city has a right away that Q Street will be able to go straight through to Samoa Boulevard. Great truck route. Q to 11th takes care of that part of town. Trucks that need to service there can go there. Anybody that needs to go north of, say, 18th Street, the truck route is easy. It comes off Gentoli Lane. So I don't know why there's this insistence that we have to do something drastic to L Street, which is a beautiful, beautiful park. And it's created, it's creative, it's created. The people here made it that way. Why can't we center things on, let's keep L Street this beautiful little paradise in the middle of town? I probably don't have, oh, the other thing to say is, we need to include places for homeowners. Most of what I've heard talked about is people talking about rental units, lots of rental units, probably owned by private equity firms, LLCs from outside the area. That's not helpful to Arcata. It's helpful to the workers here while they're being built. Oh, shoot. Anyway, could we include something for potential homeowners in these new apartments or condominiums? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ursula Newman and I grew up here in Arcata and I've been going to Cal Poly Humboldt. I really love this town and I've also, growing up, seen the impact of the long-going housing crisis on local people. I believe that positive change can happen for Arcata and I know it's inevitable, but I hope that you can take into account that we must grow sustainably and we must grow with the community. So many people have spoken today about what the community believes in and I think that it's important to make K Street a safer road by preserving the linear park, creating the linear park, and also to prioritize sustainable growth. We should not be pressured by Cal Poly Humboldt to do it the wrong way. Thank you.
Just, real quick, so because we are getting, you know, we've got like 20 minutes left in this hour, so if you are planning on speaking, please do line up so I can, we can have a better idea of how many speakers we do have left. So please, if you are able, please line up or raise your hand on Zoom. Thank you.
Hello, I was sitting at home watching this on TV and I thought, well, I better come down here and say what I have to say. I wrote this up. So here I am. Arcata is a special place. Earlier this year, I published a book about Arcata called Arcata 2022: 18 Ways of Looking at a City. In it, I tried to define what is special about Arcata, what makes us who we are. I tried to say what I thought in 18 different ways. I'd like to offer here way number 19. Have you ever noticed Arcata, unlike most cities, doesn't have an Old Town? An original part of town set aside that gets celebrated with fairs and such becomes a tourist destination, the place for residents and visitors? Can we live the old days? No, Arcata doesn't have one of those. We only have a downtown, a north town, an east side, a west side, and so forth. Are we missing something? I don't think so. I think the reason we don't have an Old Town is we don't put our past behind us and set it aside as something other. Instead, we live our past. The past is a huge element of our culture. It informs our identity each time we amble down one of our city's streets with our eclectic shops and services that fill almost all our needs as citizens of a small city. Maybe you've also noticed that although we Arcadians love our city, we're not snobs about it. Nobody's better than anybody else here. The sense of equality is a deeply-held American value and it's something we honor in Arcata in exemplary way. A lot of other cities have turned their backs on that value. We've not done that. L Street, just like it is, is one of the best places in Arcata to go.
Thank you, Dan. Sorry, that is your two minutes.
I have to stop right now? So it's a, making it a...
So, so Dan, everybody gets two minutes, so thank you.
Let's leave L Street as it is. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Una Smith from the Humboldt County Association of Governments. I'd like to start out by thanking all the planning commissioners and staff, city council, and all the community members who have engaged in this process. It's been a long two years and we just really appreciate all the caring thoughtfulness and basically love that has gone into it. The history of cities teaches us that cities succeed and decline depending on people and place. If cities either thrive or struggle, it depends on people having places they want to go to and having safe, reliable means to get there and all that without bankrupting the city. HCOG's goal is safe streets, comfortable streets, vibrant neighborhoods, and thriving, and thriving cities for our entire region. Thus, HCOG enthusiastically supports the ways in which the Gateway area plan upholds strategies for walkable communities, walkable neighborhoods, higher density, and infill development. We know these are the things that help cities thrive and not decline. To those ends, HCOG also encourages planning for target speeds of 20 miles per hour to uphold all those other goals and in downtown and mixed-dues areas of the plan. We also encourage planning for a target population because we know to support all these places we want to build, we need people who will be the employee pool, they will be the patrons, they will be the people who serve our community, and they'll be our neighbors and our friends. They are, people are the essential ingredient for a city's financial footing. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jane. I'm a business owner in the Creamery Building. I wish I were more prepared to speak today, but I've been talking about this and thinking about this for a long time now. I've been speaking with customers in my store on a regular basis for probably two years. I'm continually shocked at how few people in this city even know what the Gateway plan is. I do my best to try and fill people in, but as you all know, it's pretty complicated. So for now, because it is so complicated, I'd just like to focus on L Street. Every day when I come into work, I speak to and talk to all sorts of people who ride bikes and walk. When they find out that there might be traffic, including large trucks, right next to them, they all say the same thing. I won't use it anymore. It's pretty much the only green space, only trail that we have like this in our entire town. And it's really important. Children play right there, all the time. There are, there are summer camps that happen with Redwood Racks, which is right next to my business. This past weekend, we had six bouncy houses, bands, and lots and lots of children and families. And they were all playing right there, right next to the bike path. Now, some say, oh, it's only one lane, one way, cars won't go fast. Well, it's not just that they won't go fast. They will or they won't. I mean, yes, they might go faster on a two-lane runway road. But the thing is, what happens is when people try to cross one-way streets in a car, they forget. They look one way. They look from the direction that the cars are coming, hence causing them to forget that there might be people crossing in front of them. I think that's enough reason to not do this. Thank you for your time.
Hi, everyone, I'm Peggy Martinez. Thank you all for what you do and thanks to all the folks here, too. Thank you all for what you do, and thanks to all the folks here, too, who are speaking their thoughts and opinions. I just have not really heard. So I've spoken many times on this topic, and what I say is that I'm not thrilled with the idea of, you know, building over the earth to make a new street. What I, so that's kind of a given. I've said that a lot. What I don't really hear enough about, though, are the people on K Street, the residents on K Street, the people who would walk on K Street. I just don't see how we, K Street can sustain two-way traffic and bike lanes and wider sidewalks. There's just physically not there that much space in order for that to happen. I am a pedestrian, and I think that I represent well the people who walk, who would, I mean, it's not the biggest deal to have to walk another block out of your way to go somewhere. And, you know, so if K Street is a total hellscape for walking on because it's so loud and it's impossible to cross, I mean, you know, maybe some people would decide, okay, I'm going to walk on L Street. I'm sorry, if K Street was such a hellscape, which it is actually, it's not that pleasant to walk on, and a lot of people say that they don't walk on it and that they wouldn't walk on it, and I think that begs a question, like, why wouldn't they? It's because it's not a great street to walk on. It's not a great street to cross. So my point is, if, well, there's many points. One, though, this linear park thing is a great idea. I think it's a great idea. I also think that sharing the load of the traffic and the, and like widening the sidewalks for all people is a good idea. So...
Thank you, Peggy. That is your two minutes. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Hello. My name is Susan Parsons, and I want to thank all the leaders of the city for their time, investment, intellect, and compassion and listening ear as you go forward with this, with all of the decisions that you're facing. I know it is very difficult. I was raised in a family in the 50s with a mother who had great ambitions and was always the only woman on city council and school boards, and she did so much heavy lifting for the community with some results. But I do know what it takes, and I am very honored that you are doing it. I want to encourage you, though. I am concerned that there's not enough listening to the people, there's not enough transparency in some of your decisions. I am still disappointed that the Transportation Committee's recommendations have been dishonored, that portions of them have been lifted out of context and presented separately, and that I think that was dishonorable. I want to encourage you to know that I have lived in Arcata for almost seven years. I've had to move four times. I am the local librarian. I have many degrees. I have struggled to live here and afford housing. I, of course, forget buying, but I'm a renter, and I am now secure only because of the good friends and people that I have made in a very short time. So please know that most cities in the United States are on fire. I just spent six weeks in Indiana, and my Illinois friends in rural Illinois are also burning up, and it is a complete disaster. So it is super important not to add pavement to this town. It is super important to do what Arcata has been known for, that we all know about Arcata in the Midwest, and that is that you have vision. Arcata does things that other communities can't because you have vision. We can do this hard thing. Please have a linear park. Thank you.
Karen, can I ask how many hands we have raised on Zoom?
We had four originally. You have nine, but I have to...
Okay. Right on. Continue. And if you are in here and you are not in line, that's, Joanne's the cutoff then. So if you're waiting and you've been standing, get on up and get in line right now because this is going to be the cutoff. We might not even get to Zoom. So, okay, thank you.
Hello, my name is Isla Osburn, and I do live in the city of Arcata. I went on the walk with Dan Burden, and I've learned a lot from him. He was a very intelligent and very well-mannered and well-informed person who's worked in slowing traffic, and he taught us about many different alternatives that I think are open to us. And when I read the agenda that you passed out, I noticed that many of you are considering some of his ideas. And I think that it was Dan Burden that said, learn where people want to go and make it possible for them to get there. And we have a beautiful path on L Street, and it's a base. It's basic, but all we have to do is add a few trees, a few benches, and, you know, a little green space for kids to play in, and we'd have a great thing. And then there's the hope that in the future, that the great Redwood Trail is going to, you know, I guess you would say, match up with it or meet with it. And I hope that that's something that would be profitable to Arcata. I think that, well, I think that you know. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Hello, my name is Bonnie Byall. I'm kind of new to this. I just walked in late. But I am, I paint houses for a living, and I've been employing homeless people for about 10 years between here and Washington State. I've worked up and down the coast, my partner and I, and we've been interviewing homeless. And I hear, I'm not really super familiar with what's going on in this meeting entirely, but I know that there's buildings being built that are supposed to help house the homeless, and then a park being spoke of. I'm not originally from here, but I just heard about the meeting just yesterday, and so, but I have been interviewing homeless people in this town for some time now and getting some ideas for some solutions. My daughter's in law enforcement in Washington State, and it's been a crisis up there for some time. So I've been trying to help try to find a solution for it. And I can tell you right now, if you guys want a nice park, homeless is a problem. And it's not so much that it's homeless because in Washington and all over the country, that's being provided, but they're not accepting it. They're choosing not to because what we're really facing is a mental health and drug problem. And I think that maybe a good solution to that would probably be not so much requiring these people to initially get off the drugs, but to provide them housing with maybe providing them with some sort of a work if they can, you know, work. So maybe these trails and these parks you guys are talking about, maybe that could be part of something that, it's just ideas I'm throwing out there. But from what I've gathered from information from the homeless, that sounds like a strategy that would work, and then it would clean up the city, so.
Hey there. My name is Jeff Herbertson. I'm a builder. I'm new to the area. I've only been here about five years. I've got a family here. My kids go to school here. I intend to stay here. I think it's, I moved up here because it's such a special, beautiful place this community created, and as a builder, I'm, you know, it's my job to build buildings and build houses and fix things, and it's more important to listen to the community that created this special place than it is to give guys like me a job for eight months because we're always going to be building stuff and finding work, but making sure we're building the right thing to keep the community, you know, the special thing that it is, is really what's going to, you know, keep what everyone's created, this beautiful, special place that makes young people like me want to move here. So thank you. Thanks for listening to the community.
Hello, my name's Dana Quillman. I've owned my house here since 1987. I'm one of those horrible homeowners here that, you know, want to keep everybody out. So anyway, what I have to say is what I've said before, Humboldt State Cal Poly is the housing hog on the hill, and all of our housing problems, we know, are caused by Cal Poly and their desire to expand. So I really suggest that everybody needs to stand up against that and push against that. And yes, there's always going to be new people that come here and want to live here, and eventually, what's this town going to look like when you've built all the buildings to house all the people that want to live here? And, you know, everyone's got their perspective. The builders want work to build those buildings. The bike riders want places. The walkers want a safe place. Well, I'm a crippled person, okay? I'm a crippled person for 13 years now. I'm only 66. I look at this audience, lots of white hair here. We have a big population of people that are growing older, and where is everyone going to park? Has anyone looked at Fred Wise? Thank you very much, Fred Wise. He's the hero of this movement. At his, just go on his website and put in the search bar parking and read the articles on there to see how this will be worse than San Francisco has ever been. So all the old people and the crippled people, and it's pouring rain, and we can't even get, we can't even get a parking space in Co-op now because every other business parks there, and it's not their parking lot. So can we please talk about the big elephant in the room, which is parking in this city? If you look and see how little parking they're planning for this project, I can't even believe that it's gotten, I can't believe that it's been talked about for two years. I mean, what a waste of time. I hope it's true that they will not lend, that bankers will not lend on this project for that simple case alone. It's ridiculous. So thank you for all your time. I hope it's not a waste. I hope you can make this good for all of us. Thank you.
Hi, Paul Patino, Arcata. You know, it's pretty clear that the population does not want Allen-K Street couplet, and I'm glad that there's a lot of people here showing support for that linear park. So I won't talk about that. I think that you need to look at the other few things. Parking for one. There should be a space for every unit, not for every bed, but for every unit. One parking place, and the height limit should be four stories. That's simple. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lisa Pelletier. I wasn't going to speak tonight because my name is a bit mud right now, but I wrote a letter to the Mad River Union. I have apologized to the council members who should not have been singled out. But anyway, I wasn't going to speak, but then I heard about, you know, the old people in the town, and I think we really need to start thinking about that students are part of our population. They deserve to be here. They contribute so much to our community. And yeah, I'm for the L Street Linear Park. I'm for four-story buildings, but I was for eight-story buildings in the beginning because I wanted more housing for people, and I think that's important. But I do not want this to become a divide between the old and the young. When I was, when we were, when we were fighting for the mobile home ordinance and the Lazy J Mobile Home Park, the students stood up and cheered for us because we were cheering for them. I'm going to tell you, you're not going to get anywhere without solidarity. So that's my only message, is we need solidarity. We stop, we have to stop dividing young and old and, you know, everyone else. Let's do a better job of that. Thank you very much.
Okay. And thank you, Joanne. You timed it really well, and even though you let everybody cut you, you're going to be our last speaker, and then we're going to take a quick break before we really dive in.
Our town could be a very, very, very fine town with walkers and bikers there and cars nowhere to be seen. So everything could be beautiful at three stories with a functional rooftop. And power to the people. You're seeing it here today. It didn't happen in the beginning of this whole gateway discussion, and that is something remarkable to consider.
All right. We're going to take a quick five-minute break. That is our allotted hour there, so I'm sorry, folks at home on Zoom. I do encourage you to please, you know, send your comments via email, and they will be put into the record. So thank you. Okay, let's take a quick five-minute break. And so that I know that we're all coming with diversity of feedback, and that's going to be reflected, obviously, in our public comment and in our discussions tonight. So for each of these topics, we'll first hear the Planning Commission recommendation from Chair Davies, followed by a few more minutes for feedback from other commissioners, either concurring opinions, dissenting opinions, whatever you guys want to put through that thought process of how you guys got to that recommendation, and that we ask that everybody be succinct because we are trying to get through a large body of work tonight and see where we have consensus. And so after that, we'll review the written recommendations that have come in from the council and collectively have some time to answer questions that were raised and hear feedback from the commissioners regarding some of our suggested changes as well. And then tonight, our goal really is to work hard to build consensus. And so as we get close to feeling like we're there, we will ask the council and kind of agree if we have consensus and it's time to move to the next topic. Or if we're not at consensus, we'll kind of work with the gradients of agreement, which the Planning Commission has used, and everybody should have a copy in front of them, either on the dais or on the table, that kind of rates that one through five of, yes, this is a deal breaker for me, or I have concerns, but I'll move forward. And so looking at those different gradients and being able to discuss those. And yeah, and so then we'll take those, and then staff can hopefully develop some next steps for either future meetings, future study sessions, or other discussions that the commission and council need to have. So do we have any questions from commissioners or council members or anyone opposed to this All right. And with that, we're good with the framework. We have consensus. We've nodded, and we're moving on. So our first topic then tonight, we're going to discuss the K and L Street couplet. And so Chair Davies, take it away, and please provide a description of the Planning Commission's recommendation.
Thank you so much. It's so encouraging to see all the community engagement this evening. I love that. I know we all appreciate the public input and comment. I wanted to talk briefly about how the Planning Commission arrived at our recommendation about the L and K Street couplet. The view and the lens through which we looked at the couplet was what can we do and which plan does the most to increase safety for biking, pedestrian, and alter-abled members of our community? It was not to prioritize traffic in any means, but quite the opposite, to create a more bike, pedestrian, and alter-abled friendly road system. Through that lens, we concluded that the couplet did the most to achieve this goal. Much of the discussion focused, and still focuses, on north and south traffic with L and K Street being one ways. But when the Planning Commission was looking at this, we took special note of the fact that the linear park, quote unquote, on L Street and K Street are broken and crossed at every block by 5th, 6th, 7th, 8th, 9th, 10th, 11th, 12th. And that's where the problem comes in. That creates a lot of pedestrian and bike and complications for people trying to cross from the downtown area into the gateway area and from the gateway area back into the downtown. And so looking at the different options that were put before us, again, anticipating an increase in traffic on those east-west routes, we all concluded that basically the couplet was going to do the most to provide that level of safety for those groups. Much of the discussion has also centered on an arterial road designation for L Street and the associated traffic impacts, including trucks, that would come with such a designation. Planning Commission also recognizes that there is some level of existing truck traffic on L Street and in the gateway area, serving a variety of businesses from restaurants to commercial contractors, auto repair shops, and a FedEx depot. The Planning Commission weighed these things and decided that the changes to L Street, including traffic, were worth the increased bike, pedestrian, and alter-abled community safety in moving in and out of the gateway area. Multi-use trails is something else we looked at. The trail access for bikes and pedestrians in the couplet concept would expand. Under the couplet concept, there would be expanded bike and pedestrian trails on L and K Street. And those multi-use trails proposed in the gateway area plan are fully compatible with the great Redwood Trail Association's plans, which was something that was important to the Planning Commission. Lastly, there are many questions to be answered regarding the logistics of this plan and how it could be possibly implemented. However, if we don't state our intention to pursue the couplet concept, then we don't have any foundation with which to even begin answering these questions. And that was also part of our decision to recommend the couplet for the council's consideration.
Great. Thank you, Scott. Are there any other Planning Commissioners that would like to add to this description or, you know, propose anything? Yeah, so go ahead. We'll hear from Judith, and then we'll hear from Peter.
I'd like to point out first that the Planning Commission's recommendation was really to consider the couplet, but together with that, to recommend immediate safety improvements on K Street, very substantial ones, and to recognize that an L Street couplet, even if it were implemented, could not be implemented in the very near term. I'd also like to point out that that vote in the Planning Commission was not unanimous. There were two people who disagreed with that. They're sitting here. And part of that had to do with thinking that there would be alternatives to develop a vision of an L Street Linear Park, but to really work on those east-west streets to provide good, safe access to newly developed or redeveloped lands to the west of L Street, the lands that would be rezoned under the gateway to provide, in effect, a gift to the City of Arcata of the potential for more housing, and incidentally, a gift to some very large landowners of the ability to profit off those properties in ways that they hadn't. So the bottom line here is whatever happens, working on the safety of K Street immediately and thinking through access through the east-west streets to the lands west of L Street is going to be a big part of planning and engineering undertaking. And we did have some excellent proposals from city staff about how to do that.
Thank you, Judith. Peter?
I was one of the commissioners who supported the KL couplet, and I still do. The main reason I support it is public safety. One-way streets are safer for pedestrians and cyclists, and that's especially true.
Just let him talk. We're here to listen to him.
Do your research.
No, it's not appropriate.
It's not appropriate to interrupt from the back of the room. Everyone's gathered here to hear a discussion between the Planning Commission and the City Council. We took little over an hour worth of public comment, so the most effective thing to do is listen now and let us have this discussion. Thank you.
BS is BS, Dan.
Please continue. Peter, thank you.
Thanks. That's especially true for older people, handicapped people, and parents with kids. Regardless of what changes we make to K Street, if it remains a two-way street, it's more dangerous than if it's converted to one way. Let me tell you what my vision is. Many people have called for an L Street Linear Park. In my view, there's no reason we can't have both the existing bike path, walkway, a beautiful linear park, and a new L Street. When Dan Burden was here, the walkability expert, he stressed two important issues the city should consider in making streets walkable and safer. One, that city street should have 10 feet as the default width, and that the speed limit should be 20 miles an hour. Just the other day, I went out and measured the width of L Street right across from the Creamery Building and then a block south. Across from the Creamery Building, it's 22 feet wide, and a block south, it's 17 feet wide. If L Street were reduced to 10 feet and had ball bouts and chicanes that Dan Burden recommended, it certainly wouldn't be a truck route. It would be a city street with slow traffic. And I don't think -- I use that park a lot. I don't think it would interfere with cyclists, walkers, or the enjoyment of the park. The best thing about this is that if L Street were one-way, K Street could be one-way. It could be 10 feet wide. It could have slow traffic. And K Street could be a wonderful place. It could have wide sidewalks. It could have cafes with people outside. It could have trees and shrubs and grass. There is plenty of room if we narrowed the street to 10 feet for all of that to happen on K Street. I agree that in the near term, we need to work on the safety of K Street. K Street is dangerous right now, and we need to make changes. That's a near-term vision. The long-term vision is this couplet is a good idea and would be a wonderful addition to the city. Thanks.
Thank you, Peter. Go ahead, Dan.
Thank you, Peter. That was great. Just a small addition. I was very attracted to the couplet idea partly because of the greenscaping of both K and L Street. K Street to me is ugly, and there's zero room and a five-foot sidewalk for trees. So unless we do some major modifications that somehow include a greenscape, whether that's the division between traffic and a bike path, or get rid of parking on both sides and get wide enough sidewalks that we can put street trees and sidewalks, the City of Arcata is grossly lacking in greenery, and I think it's because of our logging history. Trees were in the woods. People were sick of them. They cut them for a living. They meant work. And nowadays, I feel like we're just way behind on greening up this town. So whenever we do these major new streetscapes, I sure hope that somehow in there, there's a strip that can be planted and start developing a canopy that we can all enjoy. If it's an east-west street, the sidewalk on the -- what would that be? The south side could be the one that gets wide enough for trees. I don't know what the plan is, but, you know, I know shading in front yards can be a real challenge. You know, we can be clever. We can plant the right-sized tree. They're doing it all over the City of Eureka these days. There's a wonderful group called Keep Eureka Beautiful that's done tremendous tree planting. They have the benefit of wide enough sidewalks on most of Eureka, so they get to just cut a hole in the concrete and put them in. So I don't know. I heard wonderful presentations from the public tonight. I'm very curious about the safety issues on one-way versus two-way streets. The visions looked really good on the couplet with greenscaping both streets.
Thank you, Dan. So I want to ask maybe a clarifying question, or perhaps our city engineer or community development director could give us some more feedback on this. But from my understanding from talking to Dan Burden is that one-way streets are kind of a double-edged sword, that you have, yes, people are going to want to drive faster because they are the only car in that lane with nothing on both sides, and they just see an open road and want to go faster. However, for pedestrians crossing the street, it is significantly less dangerous and less opportunities to get hit because you are only crossing one lane of traffic as opposed to crossing two lanes of traffic coming from both directions. I see you nodding. So verify that for me that is correct. So it is, for pedestrian safety, it is an improvement.
I would say yes, because the length of crosswalk mainly, especially on the two-way street, it's a longer crosswalk, and in one-way street, it'll be a smaller crosswalk. Definitely, a one-way street could be a fast rate if it's not designed well, but if it's designed well with some chicanes or ball bouts, it could be used to reduce the speed as well.
Will you repeat it because people couldn't hear you? Maybe a little closer to the mic. Thank you, Natra. I appreciate it.
No worries. What I was saying is, on a one-way street, the length of the crosswalk is smaller than on a two-way street. Currently, on K Street, I would say the length of the crosswalk is 24 feet. On a one-way street, it'll be around 12, so it'll be exactly in half. So that creates more safer space for all people to use. And secondly, what I was saying is, one-way street could be designed, and definitely some people might go fast on one-way street because it feels wider, but if it is well-designed with proper ball bouts and chicanes, you could do traffic calming on that.
And will you clarify what a chicane is? That's like when it goes zigzaggy, right?
A chicane is just to, not to make a street straight, just add some curve to it so people can slow down.
Great. Thank you, Natra, for clarifying that. Any other commissioners want to weigh in on that initial recommendation for, I think we're going to ask some questions, and after kind of reviewing the comments that were submitted by the council members, it seems that we are pretty unanimous in seeking alternatives to the KL couplet and supporting kind of this original vision of a linear park on L Street. I also have a little bit of a vision of this idea that was presented in the plan, the Dutch idea of like the of a vision of this idea of, that was presented in the plan, the Dutch idea of like the vu nerf, and as you were talking about, the chicanes. And so, you know, to think about how, because we did, you know, it's interesting, we got like a letter from somebody who works for Pacific Builders. And so thinking about like these businesses that already do exist in that area and do have, you know, local traffic that does need to go through there, even, you know, on the area now between 7th Street and 11th Street, there is still a lot of local traffic and some cars that do need to access that area. And so the, you know, idea kind of behind the vu nerf is like this living street, basically, where priority is given to pedestrians and bicyclists and people just using that street area, whether it be, you know, playing ball, riding your bike, kids hanging out in the street, and that, you know, the way that the street is intentionally designed is so cars have to go slow, like 10 miles per hour, et cetera. And so to look at kind of what I know we all recommended on, you know, policy here, that we also, I know, I think we all pretty unanimously supported safety improvements to K Street as well, but to be able to also kind of begin to conceptually think that there is going to also need to be some improvement made to L Street if it's not going to be, you know, a full, you know, project that has to have a thoroughfare and new construction on it. And so where it currently is, there is no labeled parking. It's full of potholes. It doesn't, you know, it's impossible really to utilize right now even comfortably. Like, I always avoid riding my bike on the actual part of L Street because it's super bumpy and there's tons of potholes. And so that is also something I'd like to maybe propose for my council members to think about, is just looking at this kind of vu nerf-style living street that could really exist between like 7th Street and 10th and 11th, like between 10th and 11th kind of already has that with the, what are those things called? The poles that stop you from going over things. Bolts, yeah, that exist there. So that's kind of where I'm sitting on this, and I'll ask my fellow council colleagues to kind of share any thoughts you have or any questions that we might have of staff or other commissioners.
All right. I guess it's my turn. I really want to thank the Planning Commission. I know that this has been hard, long conversations and not easy conversations to have. There's been a lot of passion from the community, which can sometimes be intimidating, and I really appreciate all you've done. You know, I was telling David earlier, you know, the first time I heard about the Gateway Project at all, the Gateway Area Plan, pardon me, was in 2018, 2019, when I was on the Economic Development Committee. And the way David had, you know, he was the liaison, and the way he was talking about K Street was, you know, wide sidewalks and trees and slow traffic. And that has always, I think, been the vision in my head when I first think of the Gateway Area Plan. I really, I'm really against building any new streets. I don't think that is something that I really want to pursue. I am really interested in making K Street look like the vision that I had in my head initially when I started talking about the Gateway Area Plan. So I really am intrigued by Sarah's idea of this vu nerf. I'd really, really like to explore that and see what it looks like. But for me, the, and I was on that walk with Dan Burden. I was at, you know, when he, in Eureka, when he was, you know, showing slides and talking about everything as a whole. And, you know, I was a big proponent of complete streets. That was something that I brought to the Transportation Safety Committee. I really, really believe in that. And I'm talking too long, so I guess at the end of the day, I am in favor of removing the L Street, the LK couplet, from the Gateway Area Plan. I would love to explore this vu nerf, and I'd really like to make K Street and also 11th Street kind of look like the vision that I would like. I just want to ask, like, is that a possibility? Can we make K Street, like, look like that vision? Probably not. But can we get close? Can we make it safe for all modalities and slow the speed down? Let me tell you, I drove K Street 20 miles an hour. It's pretty flipping slow. So saying you want this, but don't yell at me later. It's really slow. But at the end of the day, you know, if that's what's going to keep everybody safe, then that's what I'd like to explore.
So let me get my mic fixed here. Can you hear me back there? All right. I guess I just want to say first, just to make it clear, I'm really happy that there has been consensus among City Council, abandon K and L Street couplet. I'm in favor, 100%, 110% of addressing transportation issues on K Street that can be mitigated now. I also want to piggyback on what Judith said. I recommend that direct, we need to direct staff to develop a detailed scenario for L Street as a full-width, 50-feet-wide linear park without routine car access, but with emergency access and providing car-truck access to land sites west of L Street, mainly from the east-west streets. I do disagree. I don't think we can have it both ways. It will be an inferior linear park. And even if the engineers were able to fit vehicles, parked vehicles, bicyclists, pedestrians, strollers, rollers, wheelchairs, walkers, et cetera into this space, the feel of the pathway would be significantly altered, and the peace and tranquility would no longer exist. I think if we can address the issues, and I don't need to waste anybody's time because I think that everybody is in agreement that there are ways to mitigate the safety issues, it's probably going to be a moot point. I don't know that we would even need to look for an alternative. So that's where I stand.
Do we have any responses from commissioners on those comments?
Yeah, I'm just, I hear the concerns about adding traffic to L Street. I absolutely get that. Again, the Planning Commission recommended that because of removing a lane from K Street is what made making K Street into the vision that you described. And so I'm curious how, if we keep both lanes in K Street with a fixed width, how do you two or three propose to make K Street safer while maintaining the traffic?
Taking away parking. Don't come at me.
I mean, yeah, the solution is you definitely got to remove parking on both sides, probably have a bike lane on one direction, and then increase sidewalk width, like Dan was saying, to be able to plant trees on probably the west side would be that side.
And, oh, I'm sorry.
That's my vision. No.
And that's the thing, and I think that, you know, Sarah said it too, that, you know, we are all so passionate about this linear park and about being able to bike and walk and play safely. And if this is what we really want, then we all really, really have to be comfortable having it not only in this instance, in this linear park, but holistically around all of the Gateway Area Plan and around all of Arcata. Because we just can't have it once. We have to have it all over. So if you, if we want K Street to be safe and take away parking, then we're going to have to be comfortable with making those same concessions around other places in Arcata.
I agree with that. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, precisely. And that, you know, we see everybody coming out here tonight to support, you know, people-centric, walkable neighborhoods that people want to be in. And I think that's the biggest thing that I took away from when Dan Burden was here. He said you build for place, not necessarily for, you know, cars or for housing, right? You build for place that people want to be in, right? And so if you build a space that is comfortable for walking and biking and being around, then people are going to want to be there and enjoy it. And that should be, you know, across our city as well. And so, coming to a general plan near you, I guess. But I just, you know, seeing the support makes me say, okay, let's support that other places too and be involved. And it's great to see it. So thank you, folks. All right. So at this point, we can maybe kind of straw pull our counselors. And what I've written down here is that some staff direction, David's getting excited. He's getting the clipboard out, staff direction. Here we go. No, but to remove the L and K couplet from the plan, as is currently written, and to seek some of these alternatives, which include improvements to K Street for council discussion. And it will be nice to see, I think, those improvements separate of the Gateway Area Plan as well to be able to enjoy the feedback from our other council members as well on that topic. So, and then I proposed, Meredith said she agreed, I'd also like to explore the vu nerf option for L Street and see what kind of traffic calming measures we can have to the currently existing L Street as it is currently configured that relate to the original kind of 2010 linear park plan, looking at that, and then how to like utilize, as Natra said, chicanes and all of that stuff to make a more usable L Street. Because it's not, it's not usable right now for cars or people, really. It's just kind of a gravel parking lot. So that's my direction if we have council consensus on that.
Yeah, as many times as we can say vu nerf.
Yeah, that's my word. I'm on it. Vu nerf. It's a Dutch word, and it's spelled W-O-O-F or O-O-N-E-R-F. So look it up. There's some great stuff on YouTube about it.
A fun and educational study session for all.
So do we have consensus on that staff recommendation? Are we?
Absolutely.
We're nodding. Okay.
Yep.
And can I just add back in? There was council members' whites recommendations for improvements on 11th Street as well as part of that.
Yes. Yeah, we like improvements to 11th Street. And that, yeah, that can kind of be kind of part of that conversation with K Street, too. I think there's a lot of connectivity between those two areas and with the trail corridor and the crossings of 11th Street, et cetera. So.
Yeah, and because I will add, there are schools that are in that area. There is North Coast Preparatory High School. There's Redwood Coast Montessori. There is, Coastal Grove is very close to there, so for what it's worth.
You know, we received an email from a mom who had her 10-year-old daughter get hit. Was it on K Street? Okay, okay. Well, I think that there's just, I have a whole list I can read of things that we can do for improvements, but I guess I'll save them for later.
They're all complete streets.
Yeah, yeah. Perfect. Wonderful.
So, yeah, looking at improvements to 11th and K that follow complete streets policy. All right. Any final thoughts on K and L couplet before we move to our next item? All right. Oh, okay. Just getting some air in there. Yeah. All right. So that's going to take us, we're going to do building height and massing next and have that discussion.
That would be less fun.
So Chair Davies, please, provide us a description of that recommendation.
All right. Thank you very much. Building heights were, is a conversation that we had early in our consideration of the Gateway Area Plan. And the Planning Commission recognized that the best way to build a walkable, bikeable community that would support vibrant public transport is to build as dense as possible. That also aligns with the goals of preserving the green space around Arcata, something that's a stated goal for the city in general. And as a result, we landed on the importance of building up to maximize the density and the footprint of the Gateway Area. And that translated to a recommendation for building heights of 7, 6, 5, and 4. I'll note for, just for our discussion, that 4 is what's currently allowed. So that would be a no change for that area. The additional consideration for the Planning Commission was that the Community Benefits Program, which had a wide variety of community benefits, including affordable housing, is really predicated on those higher buildings. The higher buildings translate or equate to more community benefits. I think that's pretty much it in a nutshell. We'll kind of open up to comments from other planning commissioners or questions from the City Council.
Great. So do we have any commissioners that want to add to Chair Davies' comments or anything else?
I'll just add, you know, we're in a housing crisis. And so when you're talking about reducing building heights, you're just reducing places for people to live. And I think it's really important to talk about it with that in mind because...
Sorry. I would just add that we are in a housing crisis. A lot of our kids can't find anywhere to live. A lot of people who work in the city can't afford to live in the city or find a place to live in the city. And so they drive from Fortuna or McKinleyville into the city, which is bad for the planet. And so when we're talking about building heights, we're also talking about places for people to live. And so I just, as we're having this consideration, I want to make sure that we're focusing on that, that reducing building heights creates fewer places for people to live and exacerbates our housing crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? All right. Then we'll start with Vice Mayor Matthews. You can, okay, oh, go ahead, Judith, please.
One thing that does come into discussion of building heights that makes it a little more complicated is that building heights come to us in the context of the mass of the building as a whole. And so then we're dealing with issues of, at what level do we require that upper stories be set back to provide light and air and to prevent the construction of buildings that create dingy, dark apartments that need to be lit with artificial light and ventilated with artificial ventilation instead of open windows. And so when we're, I think when we're talking about building height, it's really important to remember that we're actually needing to address the other aspects of the massing of the building. And currently, the draft that you've been reading would allow, for example, no step backs on the rear sides of buildings. And the setbacks come into that as well. But it's important to sort of see the building not only as something facing the street, but also as something with many sides, at least five, and something that people are going to need to live in. And not to forget that when we're just talking about the height.
Meredith, do you want to go ahead and start on your policy recommendations?
All right. I will say that I do generally agree with the recommendation of the Planning Commission. So thank you. But there are a couple of things that I would like to clarify. So when we're talking about building height and massing, are we, is this, is this where we're starting to talk about density bonuses? Or, I mean, is that, no? No. Cheers. No, 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 that's fine. That's fine. I just would, you know, there's a lot, there's been a lot of concern about, you know, the fire trucks and, and all sorts of things. I'd just like to remind people that, you know, a seven-story building is not going to be built tomorrow. I don't think anybody is going to want to invest in a building that is not sustainable or will burn down. I think that there is, you know, new technology coming all the time. And there are new ways that we're building that, you know, mitigate that. And, you know, from the conversation that I had with David earlier, maybe you can, we can talk about that again. You know, a ladder truck that's going to take one person down a ladder at a time is not going to save a whole building anyway. So, and safety features are always improving. What I did have a question about, though, is when we are talking about the Beryl District, and which was, you know, seven stories that was recommended, that it was stated that there is a timeline for the Beryl District and that, so can we talk about again, like what you told me earlier, what that whole implementation plan looks like? And are those buildings like predicated on that Beryl District plan?
Yeah, I'll try and be brief. And if I don't address the question, please ask me to go into more detail. But the plan does call for the Beryl District, the southern portion, which is all-in-one ownership and comprises a fairly large site, to come in with a master plan. The Form-based Code provides standards for how buildings would be built. But those are typically envisioned on, you know, single parcels at the largest, you know, maybe a block level with multiple blocks involved. block level with multiple blocks involved, several new roads that would have to be in, you know, built into the lower portion of the Beryl District, southern portion, you know, in addition to all the, the community space that's planned for that area. We thought it was important that before the first building gets built, that they come with a consolidated plan for how the entire area could be built. That master plan is not intended to be a regulatory document, but it is intended to show how over time through a phased development, that it could still continue to meet the objectives of the Gateway Area. The master plan, as it's called for right now in the Gateway Code, would be reviewed and approved by the Planning Commission.
All right, I'd also like to put our, I'm sorry, our new Planning Commissioner, Abby, on the spot because you work for the Coastal Commission? Yeah. Can you speak a little bit to the idea of how sea level rise will or will not, you don't have to, I'm just putting it out there, how that'll affect the buildings in the Beryl District?
I'll be honest, that's not my expertise. There is someone in our office though that I could connect you with. Oh, sorry, I'm just saying that's not my expertise, so I would feel uncomfortable commenting on that.
No worries, thought I'd throw that out there.
I would just say, we had our, when we had our sea level rise joint study session and we had our panel of experts here, one of the things that I took away from that was, and this is something that there was broad agreement on with the experts that we had, was that the southern portion, the Gateway Area of the, the Beryl District area of the Gateway was, even with 10 feet of sea level rise, going to be largely outside of that. There would be a lot of other areas of Arcata that would be impacted before that. And that's one of the reasons why the Planning Commission supported increased density in that area was because its elevation is going to protect it from, you know, even up to or beyond 10 feet of sea level rise.
Wonderful, thank you. Let me see if I have any notes. Is the stepbacks and setbacks, is that going to be a different conversation or is that one that we're going to have right now? Okay, so, all right, then, so right now, I think the stepbacks are at five stories, is that correct?
Yeah, right now, the plan calls for stepbacks on the upper floors above four stories.
Above four stories. Okay, so can you just tell me what it would look like if stepbacks were at three stories instead of four?
Yeah, I can, I can tell you generally that the, the lower you set that threshold, the more expensive the buildings are going to be to build. I can't really tell you, you know, without looking at a specific project per forma, whether or not there are any buildings that would pencil at that level. But what I can tell you is that the architect that we were working with through Urban Field Studies, who did the test sites and presented those to the Planning Commission, was skeptical that even at five stories with setback, that you'd be able to make those kinds of projects pencil. He had suggested that we do some additional financial analysis to ensure that, you know, the project is, is feasible or the program is feasible. And, you know, I would, I carried that recommendation forward to the City Council as well, that, you know, once we've gone through this process and established, you know, what it is that, you know, we want as sort of a best-case scenario, that we reevaluate and make sure that it is, you know, going to pencil for projects, you know, to ensure that we actually get development out of the plan.
Yeah, and just to add to that, because something I really took away from that presentation was that he also indicated that those impacts of it being more expensive to develop is mostly going to be taken out on our local developers. And so they don't have the capital, they don't have the wherewith, like, the means to be able to, you know, pay those extra costs to meet those stepbacks. And so, I mean, it really just seems infeasible, especially for our smaller local developers, that, you know, a, a plan that recommends stepbacks, even, even where we are at, at above four, but I saw Kimberly on your recommendations at above two, I think it was? Yeah, two is just, it's not going to be feasible, especially for our, our local developers. It's just nothing's, it's just creating more, you know, strict things that, things aren't going to get built. And then that is going to have, you know, developers opt to use things like the state density bonus law to, to avoid some of our regulations and be able to build the projects that they want to build and not come within, you know, our, our program and get what we want to see get built because it becomes more difficult for those developers, especially local developers. And if we want to keep our dollars local to local developers and builders and workers, we heard our, you know, folks from the unions come speak to us tonight, that, you know, we need to really figure out and look at what is going to pencil and take, you know, the advice of architects and builders and the people that are doing it, so.
And I'll just say and reiterate once again, we are not building anything. We are zoning things so that should a developer decide that it would be feasible for them to build a six or seven or five-story building, then that would be up to them to get CEQA and to go through all kinds of permitting and get financing and whatnot.
Yeah, the architect that spoke to us made clear that, that one of the key requirements for them for the cost breakdown on the building was being able to stack plumbing all the way through for the apartments and that once you have stepbacks, then that cuts into that. And one potential is the density bonus, the other potential is that units are built that are so expensive because of those stepbacks that we're not getting affordable housing. Something that Matt, Commissioner Simmons, brought up for a visualization of a four-story building that has no setbacks or stepbacks is the Jacobi Storehouse.
Okay, thank you, I'm, I'm done. Go ahead, Kimberly.
Okay, I just want to make sure I'm following the order of operations. Planning Commission went first and now the, okay, City Council, great. I just want to point out, as Dr. Andrea Tuttle stated back in February 2022, do not assume that a 20-year planning horizon means that growth will be metered out over time and that the impacts will be gradual. In fact, especially under ministerial permitting, savvy investors and developers will immediately cherry pick development sites before the city has provided amenities that can be built. And I want to talk about Sorrel Place. What comes to my mind is soar on the eyes. I don't think we should be giving things away. I think it's really important that we create housing, but not just buildings, but where people live. Do you want to live there? Would you want to live there? I don't want to create projects, I want to make sure that people can thrive. We need to be people-centric and that's how we need to do our buildings. We can't give everything away. Building costs will go down. The state is constantly revising and bringing, there's, money's going to come to the table. But if we give it away now, we're not going to have what we want to see in Arcata and this sets, this is forever. We, we're not going to, well, I mean, I shouldn't say we can't go back, you know, we're, we can amend and make changes as we go along, but once that building is up and it's this fortress of straight four walls, no stepbacks, one of the things that I said was second-story stepback, and that was to bring to the table of, I don't know, because I can't see, because we have no 3D modeling. And as much as I can walk around the neighborhood and try to use scale and my imagination, I am actually, I don't know what that's going to look like. I don't, I need to see how it's going to affect solar shading. And while we need to prepare for those who want to be here, we also need to consider those who are already here, that have poured their life savings into homes. So I have set up various height recommendations and I, I know that, well, I first want to say that, you know, when I was campaigning, I haven't changed, I'm exactly where I was when I started. And I think what's really been important to me is that we need to build with people in mind and I understand that density is going to house more people, but is it about cramming everybody in sardines or is it about making this a livable Arcata where people want to thrive and live? Kind of got some notes here, so bear with me.
Can I just say one thing? And I really appreciate what you're saying, but when I moved here, I was a single mom with two kids and I just wanted a place to live. And I don't think that people are necessarily going to be crammed in like sardines. I think that there's plans for two-bedroom, three-bedroom, four-bedroom apartments. So I, I don't think that's necessarily cramped.
Okay, I apologize, I've lost my train of thought, so bear with me. No, no, it's okay. So give me just a minute here. I guess, well, okay, let me just say this. In Arcata, the Arcata Fire District made it clear that we have been basically lucky with the emergency evacuations at Sorrel Place during which tragedies were averted. In fact, I think that maybe Gregory Daggett had mentioned this. Some community members have tried to make the argument that we already have tall buildings in Arcata, such as the five-story at the BSS Behavioral and Social Science Buildings at Cal Poly Humboldt Campus. I just want to point out, however, this building is not residential. People and students do not live there. My understanding is that this building has a different fire protection requirement. So part of my decision-making on building height, in addition to being people-centric, is that I had to take into account our lack of adequate fire and rescue services and infrastructure. Now, Cal Poly Humboldt has made a decision to move forward with building of, you know, building height of six and seven stories for their craftsman student off-campus housing. And if Cal Poly Humboldt wants to take that calculated risk and gamble with student lives, that's their decision and that's their responsibility. And as you may know, the state does not have to abide by the city's regulations. While I set the limit of five stories in the Beryl District, I did so with reticence. It is my hope that this building height will not come to fruition until the Arcata Fire District is confident that they can protect the building and more importantly, the human lives that are at risk inside that building, which might, you know, we, while we might be able to rebuild, loves, lost lives can never be replaced. Both those who are living in the building, but also those firefighters who put their lives online to defend a building that we simply don't have the resources, the training, the staff, the trucks, the ladders, to confidently defend a building at this height. If there was a fire and tragedy struck and human life was, was lost, I would not be able to sleep at night, knowing that I took a calculated risk. So I'm going to stand in solidarity with the Arcata Fire District and their very significant concerns. At this time, the standard of coverage has yet to be completed and resources are in place to defend, to, to defend these buildings so that we can, we can revisit these heights. It's not a done deal. Our Community Development Director and staff, who have worked tirelessly on this Gateway Area Plan, have stated, it's going to take the next 20 years to build these 500 units and we can modify and amend the Gateway Area Plan element in the Form Based Codes within the general plan.
Can I ask, can I just come up for a second? No, you go ahead.
Well, I just want to, I want to add, I mean, Cal Poly is going to keep building buildings that are seven stories, eight stories. That's not going to stop. And so why should we, as a city, say, okay, we're not going to build anything above three stories because we're scared of this, right? Instead of fixing the problem and working to improve our fire district and funding for our fire district and hiring more firefighters and promoting firefighter training through our various avenues of partnerships with Cal Poly and CR and all of this stuff, why would we say, no, we don't want to build houses for people because we don't have some equipment, right? I think the, the real solution to that problem is not just say, don't build it, it's to say, okay, let's figure out what the problems are and then solve it because there are people that need a place to live now. And if they don't have a place to live, they're not going to.
I, I guess I would venture.
And so, just, but it's just, the, the argument is not pro-housing. And so from, from me, where I, I come for, for all of these arguments, I mean, it wraps back around to housing and housing is an intersectional issue. And housing touches transportation, housing touches climate change, it touches all of these things that threaten the everyday lives of our citizens, as well as, as, as fire. But with modern fire suppression techniques, the way that buildings are built, sprinkler systems, it is not, and, and I was told this by, you know, there's some outspoken members of the fire district that spoke out, but also there are plenty of members of that fire district board that said, we actually have very high-tech fire suppression in building now and talking to folks within the building trades as well, that it is highly unlikely that, you know, a fire in a seven-story building is going to sweep through and cause massive devastation with the way that current buildings are built and up to fire code. And then I know Meredith had one more thing she wanted to add, I even interrupted her, so we're going to hear from Meredith and then back to that.
That's okay, I was just wondering, Kimberly, when you're saying that you support three stories on the quarter, we're already zoned for four stories, so you want to downzone?
No, what I would like to do is be more strategic. Instead of giving a carte blanche, let's look at some 3D modeling and, and have these with respect to what's already going in the neighborhood. And I know everybody hates that word, character, but I'm going to use it. Let's keep into the design and the character of the rest of the neighborhood. So rather than build four or five stories next to a single dwelling household, let's put it where it's appropriate and where it fits. And I didn't say not build housing, I think building five stories is building housing. And if we're only having 500 units, well, let's do the math, it's not going to take that much to do it. So I, I understand that transportation and walkable cities, you know, those two things coexist and so having a walkable, safe community with excellent transportation are important, but I don't think we have to go to seven stories or eight stories. And I know that eight stories is off the table, but, you know, it's kind of semantics. It says 80 feet. And if you want to know what a story is, it's 10.86. So seven stories is actually closer to eight stories or 80 feet. So I guess that's kind of confusing to the layperson, it was confusing to me at first. I was trying to figure out, so is it seven stories or is it eight stories? So right now, we say we are able to do 80 feet, but we're capping it at seven stories. That's a little bit confusing. And again, I just want to remind you that it's 500 units with the full build-out at 35 and that's like maxing it for every, I mean, that's packing people in like sardines. But, you know, we can achieve 500 and I think we can meet our, our housing needs and take care of Cal Poly Humboldt, people who are already here, people who have yet to come. We don't have to overbuild. So that, I mean, yeah.
I am still going to press you though on that three stories because we are already zoned for four stories, so you are advocating to downzone.
I am open to conversation, we are here for consensus, so change my mind. I just am concerned that we will be solar shading, we will have these four-story Sorrel Places next to homes that have poured their life savings in, spent $30,000 to build a solar system, and now what? So I'm just trying to put myself in their shoes or in their house, I guess so to be it. And you know what, I actually live in one of those buildings, I live in a condominium. And, you know, and I'm just grateful to have a place, I want everybody, it's not just because I have my piece of the pie, I want everybody to have a piece of the pie. And I think we can do that, but we don't have to go to seven stories to do that. I think if we're strategic, we can build three, four, and five stories, we can be strategic about it. We need to do stepbacks, we need to do setbacks and we can't give everything away. Sit tight, be patient, it will come. We'll wait, you know, yes.
We're in a housing crisis now.
Yes, we're in a crisis, absolutely.
It's a crisis, act as if it's a crisis.
And you know what, the developers will come, they will. If, if we, well then, let's figure out a way to pencil it out so that we are putting people in housing that looks good, feels good, is livable, is people-centric, and it can work with the neighborhood and the neighbors.
I think Scott has something to add on that topic.
I appreciate you, I appreciate everything you're saying, Kim, and you're, you're saying a lot of great things to the community, which they're, they're excited to hear. The status quo right now in Arcata is that we're in a housing crisis, that it's affecting healthcare and all these other components. The status quo is also currently four stories. You've said that you're for building affordable housing and I'm just wondering, how do you get us to building more housing by reducing the city's ability, ability to build that housing?
Okay, and, and I guess I'm a little bit confused about the framework here because I thought we did already hear from the Planning Commission and I have heard their recommendations and I have taken them into account likewise, I believe my colleagues have. And I thought this time is where we're reaching consensus amongst the three council members and I am happy to answer those questions and my colleagues.
It's a joint study session, so there's, there was an introduction by the Planning Commission, City Council is deliberating, but this is an opportunity for us to speak together as a group. So I'll just say again, how do you shrink the city's ability to build housing and address the need to build housing at the same time? I just want you to explain how the math works out.
Well, I'd like to say right now, we don't Well, I'd like to say right now, we don't have anything. So, building three, four, and five stories is filling the bill. I don't know. You know, we can talk about this for a very long time and no housing is going to get built. So, I'd just like to reach some kind of consensus, change my mind. I, what I know is, we have people out there that have, I'm listening to the people. And it's not about what I want. It's about what the community wants. And what I'm hearing from the community is, be strategic, be responsible because once we've done it, it's going to be so much more difficult to go back. I want five stories. I think the place to do it would be the Barrow District. As with the points that you have shared already, I would like to actually split the corridor into three and four. So, that three would be in the neighborhood where there are the lower-height buildings and four where it's appropriate. I also think that it might not be a bad idea to redistrict the Creamery itself. But places like the Hub, the Neighborhood, I'm looking at three, maybe four stories if we can do a step back. And yeah, that's going to cost money and it's not going to pencil out. So, let's just put all kinds of four-story, five-story sorrel places that are this, these huge mass solar shading. And nobody's going to want to live there. Well, yeah, maybe they'll live there. But is that what we want for Arcata?
I mean, you didn't really answer the question. I mean, currently, you can build four-story buildings. You're saying we should reduce that to three stories. And you haven't explained how we reduce our ability to build and still address the housing crisis.
I would be happy to put four stories in the Gateway Area Plan if you can give me some 3D modeling, if we can go specific by parcel and see what's going on. While we cannot project the future, we can get a better idea of what than what we're doing right now. And since we are weighing in as a planning commission, we have an expert here right now. I took local government planning from her. I think it should be required for all council members and the Planning Commission. So, maybe, I would like to see if maybe, we have an expert here. That's not me. I'd like to see if maybe Judith would like to weigh in on that and tell us a little bit more.
Matt has been waiting, so he's going to go first.
Absolutely, Matt, please.
And then Judith can have the floor.
Yeah, I just want to say two things. First of all, people do want to live in Sorrel Place. There's a waiting list for all those buildings that get built. It gets fit. People do want to live in Sorrel Place. Every time a new affordable housing project gets built in Arcata, there's a huge waiting list of people desperate to get housing in our city. Okay? Second, population growth, it doesn't work where you build an apartment building and then people come. No one reads the news in San Francisco, "Oh, a new apartment building got built in Arcata. I should go move up there now." They come anyway. They come and they bid up the rent, okay? And I don't know how many people in this room rent, but it's gone crazy in the last few years. Okay? And some people, I I heard a public commenter who talked about how hard it was to find housing and how they had to find friends in order to get a good deal on housing. That's not a system that's working where you need to know the right people in order to live in Arcata. Okay? And so, instead of thinking of it as building space for new people, I think we need to be thinking of it as building space so that the people who are here now can stay. Okay? I have met, I have met lots of people here who have already been priced out in just the last few years, who they say, "Yeah, I used to be all the rent in Arcata, but the rents have gone crazy. I want to move somewhere else." And I don't want to lose those people because we're afraid of a building that is taller than the current buildings are. That's all.
It's less about the height, that it's more about strategic placement, setbacks, and step backs. I don't think we have to compromise on that. And when you said there's a waitlist for sorrel places because we haven't given them any options. So, if we don't give anybody options, then that's what we have.
But we need to build those options. There aren't options. There is a waiting list for every affordable housing project. The process to go through applying to a property management company that is going to bilk you for $50 to $70 for an application fee, and you can't find a place for a month, and you are applying to 12 different places, and you are spending $30, $50, $70 on each one of those applications, it it's like war on the renting class. And again, there are not a lot of renters on our commission and not a lot of renters on our council, right? And so, like, as a renter in this community, I know firsthand the struggle of people my age, people that are coming out of college, well, okay, that was a while ago, but young professionals living in this community that want to stay in this community, just as Matt said, we don't want to lose those people, right? These are well-educated, excited people that love our community and were maybe students. Reminder, students are part of our community. They live here. They want to stay here. They want to be here. And so, if we're building housing for students, that is still part of our community, right? They want to live here, right? And so, okay, so, how are we going to get then to consensus? Where's the, where's the wiggle room? Where's the move? Because I really do not feel comfortable going to density below four stories at all because that's what we already have, right? So, within the neighborhood and, you know, I could have some wiggle room on the on the Barrow and the Hub. But I I cannot downzone our community when we are in a housing crisis. That's just, it's, it's not possible.
So, you know, I was looking up other cities that compare in population to Arcata, and I'm not seeing these six, seven, eight-story buildings. Redwood City has a population of about 80,000. So, you know-
Redwood City is suburban sprawl. It's not a town.
What about Santa Cruz? That's up to 12, 18, 20 stories.
So, I have a teenager who graduated from high school last year, and she still lives at home. So, I'm not arguing. It is a, it's not a renters' market, absolutely. And you will spend a small fortune just going through property management to be told no. So, that's not what I'm arguing. I guess, I, maybe I misunderstood, but I thought I heard, "Nobody is going to build any housing with setbacks and step backs. So, we just have to concede and we get what we get." And I disagree. We don't have to give it away. Let's tell them what we want and make it so. They don't all have to look like Sorrel Place. I'm just saying.
I also, I can't go, I can't go below four story. We're zoned for four stories. I can't go below that. I don't feel comfortable with that.
Hey, can I just remind you all that about the Community Benefits Program and that it starts above the four-story? So, are you suggesting we throw that out?
No, I was suggesting just to kind of get the conversation going. I'm absolutely amendable for housing and for stories. What I want to see is some 3D modeling. I'd like us to be a little bit more strategic. I don't want to give away setbacks, step backs. I I want to have this built so that people want to live there. And, you know, if you don't give them a choice, they're going to have to live where they live. That's not the Arcata that I envisioned. I came here, like many, to go to Cal Poly Humboldt. I fell in love. That's why we all live and stay and live here. I don't want to change everything. I'd like to have more housing. I want to make a place for all of these people who yet to come and housing for those that live here. But I also want to consider what it's going to look like and the people that are already here and how it's going to affect them.
So, for me, I'm pretty satisfied with the modeling that we have. I think that solar shading is largely a false flag argument that people use to not have stuff built near them. And I I don't really think that that is a significant enough argument to say, "I don't want to build people houses." So, I'm not, I I don't really see a lot of necessity to spend a bunch of city money and have to find consultants and architects and contract out to be able to maybe see how much sun somebody's going to get in their yard. I did some research because I keep hearing this, you know, this this word thrown around of gentrification. And the houses on 10th Street, M Street, even ones near, near 7th Street, L Street, they are all worth well over $400,000, up to $550,000 and going on up. And the people that already live in this neighborhood are well-off homeowners. They have had the opportunity to own homes and build equity, right? Like, that is amazing for those people, right? But we need to give the other people in our community the opportunity to even have a place to live, whether they choose to rent, whether they have to rent, or whether they take advantage of some of these options for homeownership that are proposed in the plan to also incentivize. People keep pointing behind me. I don't know what's going on. But, okay. Anyway. And so, these houses, you can't gentrify a neighborhood of people that are already well-off equity-built homeowners, right? The build, we're going to see, what we're going to see is buildings like that pretty cool apartment building that's built on O Street across from Hirsch Hubcaps. It's kind of isolated. It's in the middle of a bunch of stuff. And it just got built because somebody owned a parcel and was able to build it, right? But there's nothing else around it. It's just vacant lots because it's not zoned for housing. And there's cement pads ready for things to be built on because it's not zoned for housing. And so, the bottom line is that we need to zone this area for housing to create more dense housing because infill is the key to solving climate change, to have people be close to where they work, close to transportation, be able to walk to school, to the store, wherever, and be able to live a thriving life. And so, it's, yeah. And so, I'm not really as amendable to the argument of solar shading for that reason.
Yeah, I'd just like to point out that you could actually, you could-
And I don't own my house, by the way. Is that why you're pointing at me? Because I own a house near there? Because I don't own, I rent. Okay.
Kim, you could actually, you could, the City Council could absolutely adopt your proposal. That would be, you know, that would be a choice that would be fine. And I'm sure a lot of the community would support that. But the work we've done at the Planning Commission makes clear that if you're going to do that, then you have to stop talking about being an advocate for affordable housing because it's going to drive the cost of those homes up. So, if you're fine owning that portion of the conversation and saying, "Keeping smaller buildings in Arcata is the most important thing," I think that's a fine goal. I just think, then you have to, you have to let go of any sort of support for affordable housing if you're going to force buildings to be smaller.
I really am ready to talk about our inclusionary zoning. It's more exclusionary zoning. It is a joke. We should be at 20% as far as building affordable housing for low-income and extremely low income. And obviously, we also need to take care of, you know, the middle, the moderate. We're not going to get there at 4% to 9%. And and I'm not, you know, we have the argument about, okay, well, then we have the state bonus, the density bonus. And so, I don't know that, you know, holistically, how we can have that conversation without talking about inclusionary zoning if we're going to jump right into affordable housing. And then, I think also, we need to talk about some other things like that need to be discussed. Any ministerial approval should or must include a plan for the entire site or parcel, even if that actual development will be staged into the future. And this isn't addressed anywhere in the draft. And with the two recent projects for sites, you know, that are not in the Gateway, that the Planning Commission just did, the Westwood Garden Apartments, the Greenview Neighborhood, it really does seem like it's pretty important. So, I guess, I just want to go back and say, the numbers that I put in there were a starting point. And it was really just to bring to light that we haven't any 3D modeling. And I know Sarah says it's going to cost money, but we set money aside for it. And I don't know where it went. I haven't seen any. I mean, honestly, I've heard the community say, "They'll do a GoFundMe to do the 3D modeling so we can see what we're going to get." That's all I'm asking for, is let me see so I can understand. I'm, I am amendable to building taller buildings. I just want to know what they look like in respect to the rest of the neighborhood. And I have no way to gauge that scale at all.
Hey, I appreciate all the things that you're saying. I, this, I think that inclusionary zoning is the next topic. And we'll get there. I got a lot of things to say about that, too. But I think that we need to come to consensus on this before we move on to that. David, do you want to talk really quickly about all the money that we set aside and how cost-prohibited 3D modeling is and maybe some other things that Kimberly or the rest of us can do to visualize what these buildings would look like?
Yeah, I'll, again, I'll be brief. It's a robust conversation. I don't want to interject too much. I do want to clarify, though, that there have been some statements made about giving up on the step backs. The current Planning Commission recommendation is for step backs above four stories. That's in the plan currently. And so, that's, there's, that hasn't been abandoned in the current recommendation. Wanted to note that. The city did contract with GHD to do some 3D GIS work. The core basis for that work was around developing the infrastructure needs for the, for the plan area and identifying the environmental impacts associated with infrastructure development. That was a primary basis for that 3D GIS modeling. What it was based on were the, you know, the limits of development that were developed early on in the process. And the city did develop some, or the city's contractor, rather, developed glass box models for every parcel in the Gateway Area. Basically, it it took the setbacks and the maximum building heights, and they did a model that was based on the current zoning, allowable zoning. And then, they did one that was based on the proposed zoning setbacks, setbacks, rather. So, that that is available. We produced some video footage with that, that material. It does not convey the kind of information that I'm hearing the council is interested in seeing potentially with the 3D modeling. The, at one point, the GIS team was proposing that they would be able to take those glass boxes and do more refined modeling within those. And, you know, we were pretty excited about the prospect of that. We did get that, that further refinement that was available through the GIS. And, you know, just to be frank, it was not as detailed as I would have hoped. Those images are also out there in video format. And you can see in the videos that we produced in 2022, I believe it was, you know, how you move from those glass boxes into that further refinement that was available through the GIS. There was a, a thought at one point that we could then do sketches using SketchUp that would fit within those further-refined GIS models. And at the point, at that time, you know, we just didn't have enough resolution for what the Form-Based Code would look like, what the the actual parameters would be. And so, instead, we worked with local architect Julian Berg to to show on one site in particular what that process might look like. And that was the subject of the video in part, was to show going from the glass box to the further-refined GIS work to a, an actual design and how that Form-Based Code would, you know, transform from those, those generalities to the specific. The work that we're doing with Urban Field Studios does have some, some modeling. They used, you know, sort of like, I'm not exactly sure that it's GIS. I think it's more of a CAD-type program. And they modeled five different sites. That was presented to the Planning Commission recently, and that is publicly available. We can share that. In terms of, you know, doing 3D modeling for, you know, every site within the the Gateway Area, I mean, if that's something that is of interest to the the council, you know, we can pursue getting a, you know, proposal for what that would cost. But my expectation is it would be, you know, much higher than the council would find interest or value in doing those evaluations on sites where we, you know, really don't know whether or not they'll, they'll develop, which is why we spent that energy and effort on, you know, some of these key opportunity sites where we think, you know, they are readily developable. So, again, we can, we can bring that back into the conversation and show you the the work product that has been produced from that. But I, you know, could not recommend that the council pursue full-scale 3D modeling for the entire Gateway Area. Just don't think it would be productive.
Thank you. Thank you.
Could I ask a question? I'm not trying to deflect, but I watched a Ollie presentation with Danko, Chris Dart. And he was talking about, anything over four stories isn't going to pencil out. So, I'm a little bit confused in how we are going to do these larger, taller buildings if they're not going to pencil out. And then, my other question is, you know, we spent $50,000 for Turner Housing, and this was supposed to give us a dashboard. What are we doing with that? Where are we at? Maybe that could answer some of my questions?
I'll leave it to the council. I'll leave it to the council members. I mean, I think I've provided my professional opinion many times on your first question, so I'll leave it to the council members and, and Planning Commission to sort through that. Just a quick update on the Turner Labs work. They're still working on developing the models. We've provided the, the information they need about current proposed zoning so that they can do that modeling. I don't think that you'll find that their work is going to give you information about, you know, bulking and massing necessarily. What they will be able to do is to tell you, what the, what the model is intended to do is to tell you the probability of development based on different parameters. So if you say, you know, we're gonna limit it to four stories, what's the difference in probability than if we said we're gonna limit it to six stories or seven stories? So it's, it's a mathematical model, it's a statistical model. It's not a, it's not a design that you can look at.
Yeah, and I don't think that it's up to us to see what pencils out. That's up to the developers. I think that, I mean, I-
Yeah, I have some points. Scott, you want to wrap us back around? And then I want to turn us to this gradients of agreement and kind of just see where we are and, and talk about a couple ideas that we could have to go forward that might get us on more of a page of consensus.
And before we do that, I had just one more question, but I will go after Scott.
Thanks for your question, Kim. The, you brought up Chris Dart and the presentation from Pacific Builders, and the, the Planning Commission talked a lot about that. And what we decided was that, that what that meant was that that one developer, at this point in time, did not think buildings taller than four stories penciled for their company. And the Planning Commission took the view that, as this is a planning document that's gonna last over the next 20 years of development in Arcata, that it would be a lack of vision to restrict ourselves to the realities, financial or otherwise, about building in, in the here and now, knowing, as you said, that technology changes. We wanted to be open to getting the community benefits that would come with taller buildings and not feel restricted in a 20-year planning document by the presentation by one local builder.
Yes, and I absolutely would love to talk about community benefits. The point system is pretty wonky. I'm, if I was a builder, probably the bottom line would be the dollar. And if they can build, you know, affordable housing versus, let's just put in a covered bike for, you know, bikes, what are they gonna choose? And so I don't really see the incentives in there to guarantee affordable housing. And I just want to mention, it's a little bit squirrel moment, if you will, about densities. I think we should start link, we, we need to link densities to the number, total number of bedrooms, rather than housing units. So if you look at 90 dwelling units with three bedrooms, it's gonna be quite different than 90 with one bedroom. So, you know, 90 versus 270, you know, people will be served. So that's just another aside. I'm happy to go to the gradient if you guys are ready. I'm wondering if there's anybody else that would like to speak, since I'm sure you're all tired of hearing my voice?
Okay. Okay, so, so what I'm hearing and, and some kind of, you know, good points of interest for, for myself, and Meredith, please weigh in, too, is that it might be helpful for us council members to perhaps have a discussion or a presentation with maybe some local developers. And I know that Councilmember Stillman also recommended a speaker that could maybe speak on condo production also, and I know that was already something we were maybe looking at putting on an agenda. And then also to be able to, and I think this was part of Kimberly's question as well, to, to access and be able to see how that, the Turner Labs thing works and to, to access it and like see. And so when, you know, is our data uploaded that that is online, that we can access that?
I know I have a specific date for you, but I can certainly report back.
Yeah, and just to get a timeline for that, too, because I think it would be, you know, helpful in answering some of these questions about, again, you know, what pencils. And we've all talked to developers, you know, I talked to somebody from HCD that said, you're not gonna see anything over five stories, right? Danko says you're not gonna see anything above four stories. This other developer says you might see six or seven here, right? And so kind of thinking about, we, we hear all these different pieces of information from different places. And so I think maybe having a wider range or a catchall of opinions from some other developers, but also to be able to look at that Turner Labs data to see what pencils and see the costs of things. And so those are two, two small items that I maybe propose for a council agenda item that we could, could discuss to help us get closer to consensus on this topic if other council members are amenable to that.
Absolutely amenable to that. Thank you. That's a great suggestion.
I would like to hear a little bit more since you said that it's a fallacy and that it's really not a good argument for solar shading.
I mean, I just think that's opinion. Like, that's, that's, I mean, that's, I just think it's a false flag. I mean, sure, there's gonna be shade on your building. I'm sorry.
I just would hear a little bit more, and maybe that's on me. I should have done maybe more homework, but that seems like something pretty important for me, anyway. And, sorry, I've lost, oh, yeah, I concur. I am very interested in exploring condominiums. I think that that's a great way to do affordable housing. I live in a condominium, and if it wasn't for, you know, the City of Arcata's First-Time Homebuyers Program, I wouldn't have a place. So believe me, I'm very grateful. I want everyone to have that same opportunity. We don't seem to have any homeownership opportunities written into the plan. We don't have anything really specifically, you know, for supportive housing for the unhoused, and that's another concern of mine. So I just, I guess before I start making all of these set-in-stone decisions, I was just hoping that we could further explore. This is our first study session, and, and I would like to see actually more than three, not to stall for time, but to make sure we're all fully informed. And I also would like to see another open house. We had an open house in January when we were in the height of the pandemic, and, you know, I do concur and, and really appreciate what Sarah said when I said, well, 170 people said this, and she pointed out, that's not really representative of the population. And I'm like, bingo, exactly. And people are ripe and ready to engage. Let's do another open house and ask these same questions and more. Again, now, let's, let's bring in more than 170 people so that it really does represent the voice of the people. I'm all for more community engagement, even if that means just adding one more study session and, and bringing in an open house.
Yeah, I think I wrote that in my notes, Kimberly. I think that in the beginning, when we had promised that extra pot of money to the Planning Commission, that stipulation would be, we had a certain amount of study sessions, and I think it was my suggestion that we hold off on the last one until we had the form-based codes in front of us. And I believe that I wrote that now that we do have the code in front of us, it would be wonderful to have one more public engagement session, so.
Yes, I would also, like, we did, we did promise the public that we would have another engagement session on the code. And, you know, these things, heights, setbacks, step backs, all of that stuff is really incorporated into that code. So that's a good opportunity to, to look at that a little bit closer with the community because that is a fairly new document being circulated around to everybody, so.
And just one more question, too. And, and I probably should have, again, done more homework, but I heard David say, well, they probably are gonna opt for the state density bonus, and my head's like scratching my head left going, then why did we do all of this work for the last year and a half? So I think we need to figure that out. Otherwise, we're not gonna have any community benefits, and we're just gonna give it away. And then we won't have any parks, and it won't be what we want to see in the Gateway Area Plan. And I want, I definitely want the Gateway Area Plan. I want to make that happen. I want that to come to fruition.
I think we just approved a really big park about an hour ago, so.
That is true. But, but I think that that's one of hopefully, you know, several others. But, you know, maybe the time is now before we approve the Gateway Plan that the city takes out their wallet and gets some land and get us some more parks.
Okay. I'm gonna take us to our gradients of agreement here because I did promise the, the commission chair that I would get his commissioners out of here by nine. And I, I do want us at least to begin to, to at least get some questions answered about our next topic of inclusionary zoning. So the gradients of agreement say, one is I fully support this and vote for it. And so I want you to think the Planning Commission recommendation that is on the table before us that we have looked at and provided comments and feedbacks to. So one is I fully support this and will vote for it all the way up to five. I have serious concerns and I will vote against it. Right? So council members here, gradients of agreement, where are we right now on building height and massing with the current Planning Commission recommendation? You just put it up. I'm, I'm a two. Okay. So we got two twos and a four. And so hopefully, some of these things hearing from developers, looking at some of this dashboard Turner Labs data, and of course, more conversations with our community, more engagement around the form-based code, will help us kind of formulate that opinion a bit more. And yes, there are definitely gonna be more study sessions. I imagine a few where us three are just huddled around a table hashing it out. So that, that's gonna happen. It'll be exciting to watch, I'm sure.
And again, not a final vote. This is a study session, just a poll. We're gonna still keep talking about it. But thank you, Planning Commission, for your recommendations and all your hard work.
Yeah. Okay, and with respect to the Planning Commission's time and hopefully getting them out of here in about 20 minutes, we're gonna move to our little piece about inclusionary zoning and the density bonus. And so Chair Davies, take us through it. Planning Commissioners, be ready to provide your feedback on the proposed recommendation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I think this will be a pretty brief introduction here. The Planning Commission basically focused on how do we get as much affordable housing construction as a primary goal in the housing element? And we looked at achieving it through three main pieces, which David covered at length in the video that he put together. One of those pieces is inclusionary zoning. Another is the density bonus, the state density bonus, and the, the third is the community benefits. The Planning Commission took the view that the appropriate place to set the inclusionary zoning level was below the state density bonus because if it's at or above it, let alone at 20%, it makes no sense at all to even have or utilize inclusionary zoning because it will never be put into action. Developers will always take the state density bonus. So if we want to have inclusionary zoning, it needs to be set below the state density bonus threshold. Affordable housing is, of course, one of our primary community benefits. And I would just like to point out that whether it's through inclusionary zoning or the density bonus, either way, the city gets affordable housing, which is, of course, one of our community benefits. So the Planning Commission took the view that that was pretty much a win-win situation with regards to affordable housing. And so with that point, I'll turn it over to any questions or comments from, comments, rather, from other planning commissioners. Questions from City Council?
All right. We started, we started, yes. You went first last time, so we'll start with Kimberly this time. So if you have any questions or just some points, or if you want to kind of defend or add background to, to what you put in our, our document here.
I guess, you know, and I already said this, is like, how are we gonna deal with the density bonuses versus the Gateway Community Benefit Program? And I just, I'm really concerned about gentrification. I want to make sure that we have affordable housing for all. And this whole idea that if we build more dense housing, it guarantees that it's gonna be affordable is a misnomer in my mind. I just wonder, like, how are other cities doing it? So I'm hoping that we can have a more in-depth conversation, a way to have truly affordable housing. I need to find out more, but, you know, the whole thing with Soral Place, I thought it came before the Planning Commission, when I was a Planning Commissioner, that this was going to be in perpetuity, affordable housing for 50 years, but a year later, they've raised the rents for 40%, which is definitely going to displace older people on Social Security. We have people who are on disability. So, so that's my, my big thing is I want to make sure that we take care of everyone, not just those that can afford it. I want to keep these people, you know, the, the artists in the Creamery District can't afford to live there. Our workforce housing, we, well, we don't have any right now. I, I really would like to figure out a way to have a higher, and, and I hear what you're saying, they're just gonna go for the density bonus. Is there anything, David, that we can do to assure and guarantee affordable housing as opposed to, well, if we build a bunch of small units, it's gonna be affordable by design?
I mean, I definitely think that part of the strategy is to allow for no-density maximums, which then allows the developers to, you know, flex the buildings based on what the market need is. And it incentivizes, you know, development. And there's definitely a relationship between the supply and demand of housing and, and its total housing cost. But the, the plan did call for inclusionary zoning. This is one area where we have some specificity in the Gateway Code that we're relying on for the discussion purposes. Inclusionary zoning is a, you know, regulatory method for ensuring that affordable housing is included, and not just in the area, but within each and every project. You know, certainly, the cities had experience with inclusionary zoning before, and we recognize that if the threshold for triggering inclusionary zoning is too low, that results in eliminating projects. It, it results in, you know, projects not coming to market because the, you know, the project ultimately doesn't, you know, it's not financially feasible. And so the proposal that staff made for inclusionary zoning in the Gateway area, which may be a, you know, template that can be used in other parts of the city, is to set the inclusionary zoning threshold so that it's high enough so that it will, you know, actually work for projects. A project that, right now, it's currently set at 30 units, a project that's producing 30 units. If the inclusionary zoning requirement is, you know, 4% or 9%, is the current Planning Commission recommendation, you're talking a couple of units, three, you know, four units, depending on the size of the project. And so that is certainly, you know, viable for, you know, a, a project to produce that number of affordable units. The original staff recommendation left a wide enough gap between the inclusionary zoning requirement and state density bonus to provide the flexibility for, you know, for us to ensure that we're gonna get some inclusionary zoning that follows all of the other code requirements that we have in the, the Gateway Code. The Planning Commission recommendation actually has quite a bit of overlap on the size of projects that we're likely to see in our community. So at the 4% and 9%, you're basically moving projects into the density bonus, state density bonus law. And the benefits that the developers will get from using state density bonus include an increase in the total number of units that they'll be able to build. And so the, the affordable units are essentially additional to the total number of units that they would be able to build at market rates. So that's a net benefit for, you know, the, the pro forma of the development. In addition, they are allowed to request unlimited waivers from the city's zoning requirements if they can demonstrate that their projects are financially infeasible or physically impossible as a result of those zoning requirements. And then in addition to that, depending on the proportion of affordable housing that they're providing, they would also be allowed concessions. And concessions are essentially anything that costs money above and beyond the development they can ask to not pay for. That includes our, our community benefits, you know, our, you know, recreation fee for new construction that funds parks, those kinds of fee-based assessments that we leverage onto projects. And so, you know, the way that it's designed, and I think to the chair's point, that, you know, we have said throughout this entire process, we heard from the very early stages, you know, I've heard people talk about two years. The two years has been since documents have been released. We've been working on this project for at least the last five. And a lot of that early engagement that we did, you know, affordable housing really rose to the top as the primary issue. And so these are strategies that we used within these documents to ensure that with this new development that we're, we're getting affordable housing. And since that affordable housing is a, you know, primary goal of, you know, the community, of the, the council, the Planning Commission, having that overlap and pushing people into the density bonus where they're gonna be able to take those incentives, but also- but also provide more affordable housing than they would have otherwise, is not a bad thing. Counterbalancing that with, if you set your inclusionary zoning requirement too high, then you are going to ultimately discourage some projects. I can't tell you exactly what that threshold would be, but because it's a complex relationship between building costs, building height, the number of units that are being developed, and, you know, other things that go into the pro forma. But it's really complex. I couldn't tell you off the cuff what that, you know, what that threshold would be.
Okay, I'm going to be very mindful of time, so I'm just going to make comments and maybe we can write them down, because I'm sure this is going to be carried over, so, for my two cents. So I was looking through this housing legislation and status density bonus lot. Boy, that's a mouthful. So I do understand that there's three categories of density bonus. And one of those categories of density bonus is for middle-income-for-sale units. So that is something that I would like to explore. I would also want to explore if there's new funding sources that may come up that would support higher inclusionary zoning. I realize that the city right now doesn't have a current percentage of inclusionary zoning. So I also, I myself, just from what I've read, I'm comfortable in like the 12-ish percent for inclusionary zoning, but I'd still really, it's such a dense subject matter, and I also would, you know, really appreciate a lot more information. And also from watching these Planning Commission meetings, and you don't have to answer now, maybe we can carry this over, but Commissioner Tagney, I think that you were in favor of a higher percentage of inclusionary zoning. So I'd really like to hear, not necessarily now, because I'm going to be mindful of time, but maybe at a future date, of what your rationale was for that decision.
You know, Dan, you haven't spoke. I wouldn't mind hearing from you if everybody would indulge us for a minute or two.
All right. I don't have a lot to say on that. But this whole project has been finding the balance in the community with solar shading, what Arcata's housing needs are. Inclusionary zoning is just another piece of that. At the meeting, I think, when we set the threshold that Chair Davies pointed out, it was just about, at what point are they just going to jump over to a state project and go a whole different way? And then the community benefits program goes out the window, and they ask for waivers. And it feels like it totally undermines the two years of work that we've been putting into Form-Based Code and trying to do something that applicants aren't just going to the state to build in Arcata because they can. We'd rather see them go down our pathway that's been laid out rather thoughtfully with a lot of effort. You know, it's, there's a lot of tweaking. You're asking good questions, but I'm, Kimberly, but I'm also feeling like if you say that you want to see more housing developed and you want to see more affordable units, and you want people to be able to stay in Arcata, and you like the Gateway Project, but you've undermined it so much that it feels like there is no Gateway Project. It's, if you reduce the stories to the amounts that you're talking about and increase the costs with some of the features that you're talking about, I feel like the whole thing just kind of fizzles away.
No, I hear what you're saying, and I can understand why you feel that way. And I just want to make it clear, it was a starting point for the conversation. I hope this isn't an all-end-all. You know, as you pointed out, David, this inclusionary zoning is extremely complex. I want to know more. I'd like to delve into that before I make a decision.
Okay, I have one point to add, and then I'm taking us to the gradients. So we get out of here on time to respect our Planning Commissioners for yet another meeting that they've put a lot of time into. So thank you, Planning Commission. And just the point that I want to make is just when we're talking, because we all say affordable housing, but to make in our minds know when we are talking about affordable housing, which is restricted to, you know, certain levels of income, certain, you know, applications need to be done, et cetera, versus housing that is affordable to people that, you know, want to live in it, whether it's middle-class housing, workforce housing, students, seniors, you know, people that need a place to live, right? And so just in our minds, you know, working through that, you know, discrepancy in wording, right? And knowing that legally, affordable housing is a different thing than housing that is affordable. And to just think too, and kind of call back to, like, our arena numbers that we go over a lot and see that really the place that we're lacking in our community is kind of that middle-income housing and middle-class housing and even more upper-class housing. But really, I see what's happening in our community is a squeeze on the middle class and a lot of people that, you know, cannot necessarily qualify for rental assistance or, you know, first-time homebuyer programs, like teachers, teachers, for example, but might have to work a second job as the mayor. Or, you know, whatever that might be, are getting squeezed out of Arcata and opting to live in places that are, you know, slightly cheaper, McKinleyville, Fortuna, Eureka, because they can't afford to live in Arcata, because we have a severe lack of middle-income housing, really. And so seeing, you know, a Gateway Area Plan that both prioritizes and has inclusionary zoning that is sensible and set at a level that will encourage projects to be built underneath our own community benefits program instead of under a state program, is going to be essential to make sure that, yes, we are providing some set amount of affordable units within those projects, but we are also creating housing for people that desperately need it, that don't qualify for affordable housing. They just need housing that's affordable, right? And that takes us back to the whole argument of, you know, supply and demand. And is that really true? If you build more units, is it going to happen? And you can look at San Francisco, but how is Arcata like San Francisco, blah, blah, blah? And that is, yes, a great conversation for us three to probably have another time than tonight. But I just wanted to put that out there, just the difference between affordable housing and housing that's affordable, and just really the squeeze that's on our middle class, not only in Arcata, but all over the entire country. There is, you know, a war on the middle class in my mind, but. And with that, so I'm going to take us to our gradients.
I'm sorry, but I just want to say something, that it's really misleading to say, yes, we need that middle income or the moderate. But the reason we met that low and extremely low is that we did two hotel conversions, which gave us 140 units. But those are for homeless supportive housing. That doesn't address the low and extremely low-income folks that don't need supportive housing. So we, in my, I mean, just because we've met the arena numbers and have gone over with the regional housing allocation or the needs allocation, doesn't mean that we don't need more. So I would argue that we do need more of low and extremely low housing, and of course, moderate housing.
All kinds of housing, yes, no. And I totally agree with that. I mean, yes. All right, so again, looking at the current recommendation from the Planning Commission, which is to include that 4% to 9% of inclusionary zoning, right? And so again, our gradients, one, fully support it, will vote for it. Five, I'm having serious concerns, and I'm going to hold that up and not touch it. So on our gradients, where are we on that? Just kidding. You can- Zero? No.
Different number, a different finger, but, sorry. Sorry. I'm so sorry. I'm Remy, it's late. I guess I have some serious concerns. I don't feel like I have enough information. As David pointed out, it is extremely complex. How can I make a decision on inclusionary zoning if I don't have enough information? I don't want to hold up the show. So I guess I could say, "I have concerns about passing it, but I will not block it." But I'm kind of like a 4.5.
All right, and so I think that, you know, kind of speaks for itself that a good topic of maybe, again, a study session, which us three would be really- Because, and this has come up a lot tonight, too, just to look at that community benefits program and kind of dissect that a little bit more and look about how inclusionary zoning does fit into that. I think that's a great topic that we could definitely, you know, tackle as us.
And to disclosure, we've never talked to each other. This is the first time that I had any insight of what my colleagues want to see in Arcata. So I'm really-
I know, I was researching what you were saying back when you were on the Planning Commission. I was like, "I think Kimberly said that one time." So it really is, you know, exciting for us to finally all be together and hash it out.
I'm super glad that we're having the time to finally do this, so cheers.
Oh, my gosh, it's exactly nine o'clock. Okay, so with that, we are adjourned. Nobody got my gavel out. Thank you, everybody.